Guys, ready? Good evening. The Planning Commission meeting for December 9, 2025 will now come to order. Right now, we will take a moment for silent prayer or meditation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Hank. Please stand. Please join me with the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Art, can you please call roll?
Thank you. Chair Vizera?
Here.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Casianos?
Here.
Commissioner Reyes?
Here.
And Commissioner Hank?
Here.
Thank you. Everyone is present, we have Quorm.
Thank you. Tonight, we have the minutes from regular meeting on November 25, 2025. Does anyone have any amendments to the minutes? Okay. The minutes are approved as presented. Would anyone like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda for this evening? Okay. We'll move on to public hearings. Tonight, we have one public hearing. Art, who will present the staff report?
Tonight, Contract Planner Jeff Anderson will present the staff report. Thank you. So tonight, the presentation is... I'm Jeff Anderson. Some of you know me, some of you do not. I have been in this chamber before, I'll just leave it at that. The public hearing tonight is for a project at the Del Norte school site at 1501 West Del Norte Street. The proposal requires the following: a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from civic schools to neighborhood medium and high density; a zone change to change the zoning from single-family residential (R1) to specific plan number 33, which is a Del Norte-specific plan; a precise plan to allow the development of 282 units; a tentative tract map to allow the subdivision of the property for the sale of the units; a tree removal permit to allow the removal of one significant tree on the property. The lot size of the school site is 13.62 acres. The location is the northeast corner of Del Norte Street and Nora Avenue. Surrounding uses include single-family residential to the south and west, open space to the north, office and single-family residential uses to the east. The project site is adjacent to Del Norte Park to the north, and a portion to the east, where the tennis courts are on the park site. The site was used as an intermediate school until 1989. More recently, it was used as the Regional Occupational Program (ROP) technical center. When the ROP center relocated, the West Covina Unified School District contracted with the applicant, MLC Holdings, to sell the property. And that's what led to the hearing tonight. The project site is improved with the school buildings, parking lots, open space, and two baseball fields. The applicant submitted a proposal for 282 residential units. The units would be market rate units for sale. Three unit types of units are proposed: two-story, single-family, three-story townhomes, and four-story stacked flats. Each unit includes a two-car garage, some of which are tandem garages. Seventy-seven guest parking spaces are proposed, for a total of 641 parking spaces on the property. A common area is located in the center of the project and includes a swimming pool and other amenities. Del Norte School will be extended... I'm sorry. Del Norte Street would be extended through the subject property to intersect with Sunset Avenue, and street parking will be added in that extension. With the extension of Del Norte Street, the net size of the property is 13.19 acres. Since the public noticing was completed, the applicant has decided to revise the proposed plans. The revised plans for the site would eliminate the four-story unit types, what's called the stacked flats, and replace them with the three-story unit-type townhomes. With the revisions, the site would be under 20 units per acre, and a maximum building height would be three stories, or 38 feet. The revised project is for 260 units, and would have the same site layout. In other words, the street network would remain the same. Staff will continue with the presentation, but will be limiting the information to be consistent with the applicant's revised plans. Staff did not have time to thoroughly review the revised plans, as we just got them recently, and therefore, we're going to modify the report to not go into the details of the part of the 282 plan that is not on the table anymore. After staff's presentation, the applicant will then provide more specific information on the revised proposal. So this is the proposed site plan. The site layout consists of single-family houses on Del Norte Street and on Nora. So those that are lining the street are single-family homes with garages and driveways. And then behind those, to the north, the central and to the north and east, this area would be the three-story townhomes. There are two points of vehicular access, one on Del Norte Street, which is down here, and then one on Nora, which is over here. Vehicles would access garages in the units through a system of drive lanes, which comply with fire regulations. The north and east setbacks are a minimum of 10 feet in width, so that's the area up against the park, in here and in here. Those are at least 10 feet in width. And then they have paseos that are proposed to allow pedestrian access to the units. The paseos are the green spaces you can see in between the buildings, opposite the driveways. I'm going to go through a series of floor plans and then elevations. And this may get a little bit tedious, because there's quite a few of them, but I'll try to go through them fairly quickly. There are two types of single-family houses and three plan types for the townhomes. In addition, there are two architectural styles for each one of those. So I've prepared slides for each type. This is the floor plan for what they call Plan 3222. It's a single-family unit, and it's two stories, 1,678 square feet, three bedrooms, and two and a half baths. This is what they call Plan 3522, 1,957 square feet, four bedrooms, and three and a half baths. Again, two-story, single-family. And then, so that's the two single-family types. Now we have three townhome types. This is the plan for what they call Plan 5 for the townhome, 1,226 square feet, two bedrooms, two and a half baths. This is floor plan for Plan 6 Townhome, 1,470 square feet, three bedrooms, three bathrooms. As you can see, these are three floors. Just to point out, this one has a tandem design. This is a tandem garage, where the cars would park front to back, not side to side, but front to back. This is the floor plan for Townhome Plan 7, 1,755 square feet, four bedrooms, four bathrooms. Now we're going to look at the elevations of the architecture. There are a variety of building types proposed, and two architectural styles. At the end of the rows of buildings, are units... The applicant has agreed to provide... And in those end units, they provided enhanced elevations with extra treatment and details to provide more interest. So those are on some of the end elevations, and mainly those elevations facing the park at the end of buildings where there's greater visibility. I'm going to present 10 slides of the architectural style. This first one is the Plan 3222, and it shows the elevations of the seaside style, and the building is 24 feet, 3 inches in height. This is the Spanish style for Plan 3222, which is 24 feet, 2 inches in height. This is the elevations for the seaside style Plan 3522, which is 24 feet, 3 inches in height. And this is the Spanish style, which has a building height of 24 feet, 6 inches in height. That's Plan 3522 as well. Then we'll look at the multifamily townhomes. There's a variety of these, because some of the townhomes have four, some have five, and some have seven. So there's a variety of elevations that are shown. This is the seaside style for the fourplex. The building height is 37 feet, 2 inches. This is the seaside style for the fiveplex, and the building height is 37 feet, 10 inches. That's the tallest building, is 37 feet, 10 inches. This is the Spanish style for the fourplex. The building height is 37 feet, 2 inches. This is the Spanish style for the fiveplex, where the building height there is 37 feet, 10 inches. This is the seaside style for the sevenplex. The building height here is 37 feet, 10 inches. And this is the Spanish style for the sevenplex. The building height is 37 feet, 10 inches. I talked about parking a little bit at the beginning, but let me go into a little more detail here. Each attached and detached unit has a two-car garage. Of the 282 garages provided, 118 are two-car standard garages and 164 tandem garages. A total of 564 parking spaces are provided in the garages. A total of 77 guest parking spaces are provided, for a total of 641 parking spaces for the units. In addition, the detached houses have driveways that will allow two cars to be parked in them, so that's an additional 68 parking spaces. And then, street parking is allowed on both Nora and Del Norte, and additional parking... Street parking is being added on Del Norte Street, where it's being extended. At least 11 parking spaces will be available on that street. In terms of the site design, walls and fences will be installed for the project. Fencing will be installed where adjacent to neighboring properties, solid walls and fences along the east side, combination three-foot wall and three-foot tubular steel fencing on most of the north side, adjacent to the park. And fences would also be installed around the single-family lots, solid fences. The Nora and Del Norte frontages would be open front yards with single-family units. Common open space will be provided throughout the development, with the largest being the central open space of 18,000 square feet, which includes a swimming pool and other amenities. Other open space areas include the yards of the single-family houses, the paseos between the units, and a few other smaller open spaces around the project. A tract map would be recorded to subdivide the properties to allow for the sale of the single-family lots, and the arid subdivision of the multifamily units for sale as condominiums. This is the landscape plan. There's landscaping proposed. You can see where the landscaping would be, and the trees that would be... that are conceptually thought of for this project. There's a tree removal permit that's required, as there is one tree on the site that is significant because of its species. That tree is a coast live oak, which is located... Well, you can see it on the map. It's located between some of the buildings along the Del Norte frontage. The applicant did do some community outreach. Three community outreach events were held to allow for communication between the applicant and the public. First one on July 8, 2025, at Del Norte School. Second one on August 13, at Del Norte School. The third one in August 21, 2025, at City Hall during a town hall meeting for Council Member Brian Gutierrez. Issues that were brought up during the community meetings include traffic and congestion, guest parking onsite and along Nora and Del Norte, and whether it is sufficient, gating and fencing, the price estimates for the units, and lack of affordability, when homes would be available for purchase, and an interest list signup, if items from the school will be donated before demo, removing two fields from Little League access, and not enough amenities provided for the density. The project was reviewed pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, which is commonly referred to as SEQA. The analysis was conducted by Rincon Consultants. I'm going to turn over the mic now to John Morland from Rincon Consultants to go over the process they did for the SEQA.
Excuse me, we need to open public hearing, correct?
We're still on the staff.
Are we still on the... Okay.
We're still on the presentation. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the West Covina Planning Commission. My name's John Morland. I am Director of Community Planning with Rincon Consultants. We were contracted to conduct an environmental analysis for this property subject to SEQA. And when we get in a project like this, what we first do is we look to see if there are any exemptions from SEQA that would be applicable to the project. We didn't find any. So what we would do then is we would conduct an environmental study, which is known as an initial study, which looks through each one of the 20 categories that's required by SEQA. And when we conducted that analysis, we determined that a mitigating negative declaration was appropriate. The process for the mitigating negative declaration includes a public circulation period and a public comment period. And the initial study mitigating negative declaration was distributed to the public from between October 28, 2025, through December 1, 2025. Slide, please. When we conducted the environmental analysis out of those 20 environmental topics that I mentioned, there were six topics where environmental impacts exceeded thresholds. However, with the incorporation of mitigation, that brought the potential impacts below the level of significance established in the City of West Covina SEQA guidelines and the state of California SEQA guidelines. These six environmental topics include biological resources, so essentially, mitigation was the need to have a nesting survey prior to any demolition of trees. Cultural resources, which required cultural resource surveys to be conducted during grading activities. Geological analysis, which required paleontological recommendation and potential mitigation measures, should any paleontological resources be identified during grading. Hazards and hazardous materials, so essentially requiring an assessment and abatement if any lead paint is found on the buildings for demolition, as well as a Phase 1 of the property prior to any grading activities. Noise also exceeded thresholds, and there is mitigation in there to essentially provide noise barriers adjacent to the homes to the east, as well as the south during construction. And tribal cultural resources for the requirement of adding a tribal monitor, as well as requirements for should any tribal cultural resources be found during the grading activities. In all the other 14 categories, the threshold was either... When we conducted the environmental analysis, it was either identified as no impact or less than significant impact. Slide, please. So during the 30-day comment period, we did receive comments from the Los Angeles County Sanitation District, which was just an informational letter, as well as Caltrans, which requested analysis along to the on-ramps to the south of the project along Sunset. However, we determined, based on those responses and the trip generation, those identified for the project, that no changes were needed for the initial study mitigating negative declaration. And Jeff also mentioned to you about the revised project. So the project that was circulated as part of the initial study mitigating negative declaration was the 282-unit project. However, we conducted an analysis, and we've determined that all 20 categories are either... The 260 units, out of all the 20 categories, the impacts would either be equal to or less than for the 260-unit project. Therefore, the revised project is, in our determination, is consistent with the circulated initial study and mitigated negative declaration. And that concludes the environmental portion of the presentation. Thank you.
So now, for staff recommendation. Staff has prepared resolutions for the general plan amendment, zone change, precise plan, tentative tract map, and tree removal permit. Findings have been made and provided in the staff report and in the resolutions. Conditions of approval have been included in the resos, including conditions requiring the enhanced elevations, a final landscape and irrigation plan, a detailed wall and fence plan, compliance with Art in Public Places ordinance, the submittal of CCNRs, and a homeowner's assistance program. Based on the submittal of the revised plans that were provided, the 260 that has been mentioned, staff is recommending continuing the hearing to January 27, 2026, to allow staff to review the revised plans and work with other departments on revised conditions. Options for the commission include recommend approval of the revised plan for the 260 units to the city council, continue the hearing as recommended by staff, or for a reason specified by the planning commission, or to deny the project. That concludes my staff presentation, but I did want to make one comment, that we had heard some information that this project was at one point scheduled for the Community and Senior Services Commission, and I believe that to be the case, though I was not aware of that being on that agenda myself. And as I understand it, neither was the applicant, because the applicant was getting information through me. So... And I only knew about that about a week ago, so I think the applicant... Just to make clear, the applicant was not notified about that agenda item on the Community Services Commission. And that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions at this point, we'd be happy to answer those.
So at this point, we have a lot of interested residents here tonight. So I would say, I believe they came here to speak, but since the staff recommends a continuance, you know, would that be in the best interest at this point, or should we move on with the public hearing?
So you have a couple of options. You could continue the hearing without opening it, just say we're going to continue the matter to the January 27, not open it at this point in time, and then the hearing will be opened at that point in time. Or you could open the public hearing now and let people speak based on the information that they have now. Understand that on January 27, there's going to be all this new information, because staff's going to update the package to reflect the reduced density option, assuming that that's the commission's desire. So people who speak tonight may be able to speak again at the next public hearing based on that new information. You could either close the public hearing afterwards. I kind of want to take this one step at a time. First, I'll just maybe, taking this one step at a time, do you want to open the public hearing tonight, and then continue it, or do you want to just continue the matter without opening the public hearing?
How does the commission feel about this?
I guess one of the packages, the updated packages that we received, is it today, and did the public also receive that package? Okay.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Originally, the plan was for 282, however, it was revised and down to 260.
Correct.
And I was just wondering, we also just received this package as well, and I just wanted to know if the public also received the package that...
Well, no, there was no time for the public to receive it. But I would say that, you know, the applicant is prepared to discuss why they're doing that, and as the city attorney expressed, it's up to you what you want to do, but it would be worthwhile probably to hear from the applicant and the public, I think, tonight. That would be my thought.
Yeah, I think so. Since everyone is here, we should hear what is the original plan, and what was, and why was it we got reduced to 260?
And I think a lot of them were opposed to the four stories and the amount of parking that would be taken up in the street areas surrounding their homes. And they should know that even though the number of units has been reduced, the number of parking spots have not. So that would eliminate some of the concerns there. So, okay, well, let's go ahead and open public hearing. And I guess we already heard from the applicant. Did you have something else to add?
We have not heard from the applicant.
The person we heard from was the environmental, who actually is for the city. He's preparing something for the city.
Thank you.
So just a quick note, we will allot the applicant a little more time, because it is a project. If that's okay with the planning commission?
The public, we would like, let's limit them to three minutes, please.
So maybe we don't open public hearing yet? We continue the presentation with their presentation?
It's only because we have so many. And I think a lot of their concerns probably might be eliminated with the new...
I think many of the questions, many of the concerns that the public have may be addressed by the applicant.
The limit on the minutes does not apply to the applicant, does it?
The time limit? Usually applicants will have a little more time.
Yes, okay, so...
Well, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commission. My name's Luisa Fletto. I'm here representing Meritage Homes. We're the applicant for this project. First, I want to say thank you to staff. You know, this wasn't a normal process, I think, with some turnover at the city level, but they have been great in really helping us continue this forward, and have been very responsive and professional, helping us get to this point today. So a little bit about what I'm going to run through, I'm going to share a little bit about Meritage Homes, who we are, how we build. I'm going to touch on the proposed site adjustments, share a little bit about the neighborhood outreach and some of those concerns that we heard, and then share some project renderings. Next slide, please. So Meritage Homes, we're the fifth-largest public home builder based on closings as of 2024. We've been around for 40 years. We operate in 12 states, 31 markets, and have built over 200,000 homes to date. Here in Southern California, we've been a home builder here since 2004. You can see some stats there. So we have 10 actively selling communities throughout LA, the San Gabriel Valley, Orange County, and the Inland Empire. Operationally, we focus on a first-time home buyer, a first-time move-up buyer. That's really near and dear to our hearts, and that's who we target with our homes. Next slide, please. So a little bit more about Meritage. So we are an 11-time recipient of the EPA's Energy Star Partner of the Year Award. We have... We also participate in the Avid Awards. So Avid is a third-party customer service survey, and they go to builders, big, small, private, public, doesn't matter. And it's kind of... They do a one-month survey and a one-year survey for new homeowners. And Meritage, our Southern California division specifically, has actually taken the top award nationally for multiple years in a row recently, so we're really, really proud of that. Next slide, please. So a bit about how we build. This slide kind of features some of our green features that we do in all of our homes. So we are triple-certified through the EPA. We're known as the leader in energy efficiency. Our homes with the changes in Title 24, so all of our homes come with solar EV chargers in the garages. But two things I want to highlight for you are the spray foam insulation and conditioned attics. So conditioned attics, we don't have any venting or openings there, so it really helps keep your energy bills lower, because you're not having to heat or cool air that's just escaping. And then, spray foam insulation actually makes a world of difference, both for conditioning the attics, but also for noise penetration in the units. So it actually, even though what we're showing here includes attached homes, the townhomes, you don't hear your neighbors with that spray foam insulation. So it makes the living environment really, really nice. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned before, Meritage, operationally, we're focused on a first-time So as I mentioned before, Meritage, operationally, we're focused on a first time home buyer. And what that means is targeting the missing middle housing. And this is something that is all about making it attainable. So on the left, you have your traditional detached single family homes. Those could be your 6,000, 7,000 square foot lots. All the way to the right, you see that mid rise, high rise. And what we focus on is the middle because while it does bring an increased density, it allows the costs of land development to be spread throughout more homes to keep our pricing lower so that we can target that first time home buyer. This means that teachers, police, public employees, people who are critical to the community are able to afford a home and live in this, the city that they work in. Next slide, please. So as Jeff shared, the site's location, we're about half a mile north from where we are today. So right just outside of that downtown area. Next slide. So the original plan was for 282 homes. And you can see the pink is the single family homes, the green is the townhome, and the blue is that four story stacked flats. So this was, overall, we were over 20 units to the acre, so we were at that 21.4 density. We had the two, three, and four story homes. And if you go to the next slide, essentially what we're proposing is that that area where these stacked flats would, were to be replaced with additional townhome units. So this would eliminate 22 homes on the site. As you mentioned, shared, the parking would, the guest parking 77 spaces would remain the same. So we would only be proposing two and three stories. The density ends up below 20 to the acre, so we would only be looking at a neighborhood medium, general plan amendment, rather than a mix between neighborhood medium and neighborhood high. The open space on site ends up increasing a little bit just because of how the building footprints work. The townhome footprint is a little smaller than that of the stacked flats. And then the guest parking, so as I mentioned, the 77 spaces are still remaining. And so it does end up increasing that parking ratio a little bit just because we've lost the 22 units, but the guest parking on site stays the same. Next slide, please. So for outreach, as Jeff mentioned, we noticed per the city's radius requirements of 500 feet in talking with staff and kind of our own internal policies that we like to do, we went to end a block or across the street in some of those critical areas where, you know, you don't want to have your neighbor who gets a notice and you don't, and you're wondering why. So we try to make sure that we encompass some of those end of blocks. Next slide, please. So what we sent out in June was our first mailer. And this is, the slide shows what it is. So it includes some fast facts about the project and then some typical frequently asked questions we get. It also includes my, my contact information directly, so phone calls or emails or anything like that. We intend, we, we set up and held, if you go to the next slide, we held our first meeting in July. We had a little mix up with our printer, so the save the date card did not get included when we sent those out first, but I had a few neighbors who did receive the mailer who reached out, and we were able to let them know directly about the meeting date in July. So that's why there was a smaller group who made it to the July meeting. But when we found that out, we immediately kind of got back on it to reschedule a second meeting. So that was the meeting we were able to hold in August. In August, we had 26 people sign in, but more people did attend. And then we also participated a week or two later in Councilmember Gutierrez's town hall here. So our community meeting format is done in an open house style. So we have stations where our entire consultant team is present, so people can go ask the questions that they have, one on one, and kind of have that dialogue and really learn about the project and hear their concerns. And we kind of write them all down and make sure that we have a tangible list that we can address. So next slide, please. As Jeff mentioned, there were a handful of questions and concerns. I'm going to focus on four main ones, which are traffic, guest parking, amenities, and then the gating and fencing. So next slide, please. For traffic, the site is situated within an existing single family neighborhood. We have the two points of access, one along Del Norte Street, that's basically at the terminus of Hollow and Del Norte, and then one along Nora. Traffic was evaluated in partnership with the city and TransTech. The analysis prepared in the traffic, for the traffic analysis was for the original 282 homes and was done prior to some of the feed, was started prior to some of the feedback we got during our community outreach, which I'm going to touch on some of those things and what we were able to implement. So next slide, please. One of the things that we're excited that this project is able to do is extend Del Norte Street from where it currently, currently ends at Hollow all the way to Sunset. And this will be creating a right in, right out condition. Additionally, on the south side, we would be adding 11 parallel spaces on that public street. The section of Del Norte would be dedicate, would be built by Meritage and then dedicated to the city as a public street. You can see the two sections below. Next slide, please. So one of the things we heard during the community meetings was, great, you're extending Del Norte to Sunset, that helps traffic leaving the site, but what about traffic coming to the site? They're still going to be queuing at Workman or Roland and coming into the neighborhood. Could you explore if it's feasible to create a left turn pocket on Sunset coming northbound so that they could turn directly onto Del Norte Street? And so we immediately kind of turned around and chatted with the city about that and got our traffic engineer evaluating that. So what you see here is something that we're committed to incorporating as part of the project, should it, should it be approved and moved forward, which is creating a left turn pocket from northbound Sunset onto Del Norte. So this would divert a lot of the traffic that would be queuing at Workman to turn into the neighborhood, cutting through that existing single family neighborhood to, to get to the project site. And one of the things that we discussed was whether or not this could be prioritized during the permitting phase to get that completed first to allow construction traffic to avoid that neighborhood. And that's something that we're open to discussing as well and seeing if that's feasible. But with this incorporation of the, of the turn pocket, it actually diverts over 35% of the project related trips that would be cutting into the neighborhood at Workman. So we think that this is a great benefit to the project that we're excited to incorporate and present to you tonight. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, one of the other concerns was around guest parking. So this is the new, the adjusted site plan, so for the 260 homes. So in pink, you can see the areas of guest parking that are distributed throughout the site. As I mentioned, there are 77 spaces that are provided on site. Additionally, along the eastern side of Nora and the northern side of Del Norte, even though we have the single family homes with driveway cuts, there would be about 11 spaces, those are those yellow dots, of public guest parking that anyone could utilize. The area you see in red is street frontages that currently fall underneath the, a permit, a preferential parking permit restrictions. So most of the existing adjacent streets are restricted from these potential future homeowners being able to park on them. They would not be allowed in the program or anything like that. And actually, the 11 spaces that we're looking to create on the south side of Del Norte would fall in that existing preferential program because the language is from Nora to Sunset. So those are 11 new spaces that are getting created for the existing community, essentially. So with the project, CCNRs would be required, or excuse me, CCNRs would be established that would require residents to park two cars in their garage. It's something we do in all of our communities, and it is written in there that there's storage designed into your plans. The garage is meant to hold two cars. And we will actually go to the point of garage inspections and different things like that if we think that there are issues or it's not being abided by. Additionally, with the 77 guest spaces on site, we're open to the discussion of creating a guest permit program, should that be needed, just to make sure that you're not having overflow from the residents parking in those spaces. Next slide, please. So around the amenities, so this is our central amenity space. We're proposing a pool, restroom building, shade structures, there's barbecue area, small lawn area. And you can see that this is framed by the three different townhome buildings that orient the front doors to that open space and really help create that engagement. Next slide, please. Additionally, we have open space, open spaces throughout the community that provide means of connection and wayfinding. So what you're seeing here are three kind of typical paseo examples. So the green paseo A, if you look at the key map, that's kind of our east, our westernmost one, and that provides some additional seating areas as well as the connection to Del Norte Park. Green paseo B is more of our typical paseo you would see between townhome buildings where you have some ornamental planting, you have low patio walls and specimen trees and different things like that. And then green paseo C is to the east of the project. That is our second park connection to Del Norte Park. And that also has some low seat walls, some DG, some specimen trees, and some different visual interest there. Next slide, please. So this, these next two slides that I want to show you really kind of showcase how the change of the original plan to the revised plan, look on the site in this area specifically, where you have before the townhomes and the stacked flats together, and you see a little bit of the stacked flats to the south. You can see that the paseos are a little bit tighter. You have some different conditions between the stacked flats and the townhomes, and you're a little bit tighter for the easternmost stacked flat building that faces the tennis courts. And if you go to the next slide, what this change is able to do is spread out those townhome buildings a bit more. So you get larger paseos, you get larger setbacks from the park for the building that's fronting towards the tennis courts. And we're able to create that additional open space area at the second park connection, that green paseo C space. So it's a very, in terms of the site layout, it was a very small change because the circulation and everything really stays the same. But with that footprint change out from the stacked flats to the townhomes, it really benefits the, the project as a whole, bringing in some additional open space and some additional opportunities for programming. Next slide, please. So with walls and fencing, what we are proposing, as you can see, and as Jeff mentioned, is that along Nora and Del Norte, the single family homes front out to the existing neighborhood, helping create a complete street scene by having your, your usual, you know, it's a front of house, you have a garage, you have a drive, a full driveway, and you're really creating that, that street scene. They have private yards that then create the rest of the site where the townhomes would be. Along the northern property line, adjacent to Del Norte Park, that would be a combination wall. So it would be about a three foot block wall with three feet of tube steel on top. So it creates a permeability and an openness between the community and the park. Along the eastern edge with the tennis courts, we did do a solid wall just for some sound attenuation there. And then there would be for the end units along, at the, at the corners and at the entries, there would be some additional room for planting in front of the walls, whether it's low shrubs or vines to help with deterring graffiti, different treatments would be utilized there. Next slide, please. So getting into some renderings, this is the view along our Del Norte Street extension. So you can get, it really does feel like a single family neighborhood. You see just a little bit of those three story towns behind, but from the street view, you're really feeling just a normal two story, single family home. Next slide, please. This is a example of a three story townhome building. So this is a Spanish style. As Jeff mentioned, we also have the seaside contemporary. With the three story townhomes, the massing steps back a lot, there's a lot of movement in the architecture, softening the height as well as creating visual interest. Next slide, please. So this is a view from Del Norte Park into the development. So you can see that combination wall really helps it feel open and connected between the spaces. We're not turning our backs, but we're acknowledging that that is a, is a public park, separate from the community, but we're not just turning our backs completely to it. Next slide, please. So just kind of reiterating and wrapping it up with the revised plan, the elimination of the four story stacked flats replaces them with three story townhome buildings. It reduces the unit count by 22 homes, bringing the density below 20 units per acre. So it eliminates the mixed GPA request that includes a high density residential designation and is only for a neighborhood medium designation. It lowers the maximum building height to three stories. It increases the open space on the site, and it improves our guest parking ratio from about a .25, which is what the city standard is, to about a .3. And that's not including the driveway spaces or potential on street spaces along Nora or Del Norte that are created. Next slide, please. So as Jeff mentioned, our revised entitlement request is for the GPA from civic, civic school to neighborhood medium residential, the zone change from R1 single family to Del Norte specific plan. Staff does have a document updated already with the proposed changes. The precise plan updated to reflect the reduced density, tentative track map updated to reflect the reduced density, the ISM and D document, as well as the concurrent findings document, and the tree removal permit. I know that staff has presented a handful of options for you guys in terms of what you can do tonight. Our request is that, should the project be approved, we're approved and allowed to move on to city council, but we're open to any, any questions you guys have or consideration that's just Meritage's request to keep this one moving forward. Next slide, please. And that, that concludes my presentation. My entire team is here. If you guys have any technical questions, otherwise, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Sure, I've, I have a few questions. With regard to the, the garages, just practically speaking, can you tell me what's the largest vehicle that can fit in those garages?
Sure. So our standard garage is going to have a minimum 20 by 20 clear for vehicle parking. The tandem garage is actually a bit oversized, so it's about 10 and a half feet wide by over 40 feet deep. So most cars have no problem fitting in our garages.
So when I, when I ask what, what's the largest car, can you give me an example?
I wish I knew car dimensions better. I am not a car person, I'm sorry.
It just.
Did you say 13 wide? Or 11?
Sorry. So on the.
The tandem.
The tandem is going to be, it's about 10 and, it's about 10 and a half clear inside to inside. So if it's standard parking stalls, eight and a half, nine feet, so this has that extra room, so, you know, people can get in and out okay on either side.
A pickup truck fits?
Yeah.
Full size?
A full size pickup truck fits, yes.
An F-150 fits in there?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Fair enough. I had a couple of other questions with regard to the expand, or the proposed expansion of the Del Norte Street. Okay, so on that, I guess that would be the south side of the new street, is there basically just going to be a sidewalk there to nowhere kind of thing?
So right now, there's not existing sidewalk on the south side of Del Norte Street, there's only sidewalk on the north side. So we are. So we are going to be proposing new curb gutter parkway sidewalk on the north side. On the south side at that area, right now, we are just showing the 11 parking spaces carved out. There's no sidewalks, it's just going to be planting. However, we can easily add a sidewalk so that people could get out of their cars without any issues.
Okay, all right. I did want to ask, look, obviously, I believe West Covina National Little League is involved at that park and currently, I understand, utilizes, I think, the large field and the pony field at Del Norte School. So I'm trying to figure out what's going to happen with that. Have you guys had any conversations with them? I mean, I view this sort of as a death knell for that league.
Right, so right now, our understanding is that the school runs the one field that's closer to the large field that's in Del Norte Park to the Little League and that the secondary field is rented to an adult softball league. We acknowledge that that is an agreement that the school district has had in place with the Little League. But you know, the property that they put up for sale included all of the field area. So for us, it would require redevelopment of the entire site to make the project work.
It's a catch 22. You're going to bring new families in theoretically and then they're not going to have a lot of places to.
Yeah, so the project would be paying park and loop fees. I want to say on the 282 unit concept, it was over $3 million in park and loop fees, so.
But it's going to go down, right?
It'll go down a little bit for the unit loss, but it'll still be well over $2.5 million. I want to say it might be near like 2.8.
I think it was 3.2 is what I read. And so that means it's going to go down to 2.8?
I would have to look at the math. I want to say when we looked at it briefly, that the new number was somewhere 2.8 to 2.9 for a park and loop fee.
Okay, and then as far as the entrance, the proposed entrance from the park to the complex. Is that something that, so I looked at the overview. It looks like the current pathway that basically connects to Del Norte School doesn't intersect with your plan. So what's going to happen with that? Is he going to be responsible for repaving that or you guys doing that?
Sure, so we would work in tandem with the city. The park portal was, the park entrances from the project were something that we're discussed early on with staff. Staff has changed over a little bit since. So if that's something that isn't desired or wanted anymore, we can obviously amend that. If they were to remain on the plans as currently shown, we would be, Meritage would be responsible for making sure that they weren't just walks to nowhere, gates to nowhere, that they would connect to existing sidewalks within the park.
Okay, so the sidewalk in the park is going to remain status quo? Is that what you're saying?
The existing sidewalks in the park would remain as they're currently shown. We would provide additional segments to connect the proposed gate locations to the sidewalk if there wasn't already sidewalk there.
Okay, so I guess what I'm trying to figure out, because it looks like it's just going to awkwardly dead end. What are you going to do, just sort of like do like a right angle or something like that?
So right, are you talking on the park side?
Yeah.
So we would work with the city and our landscape architect and our civil engineer would work in tandem with the city to make sure that any sidewalks, I know that the city is undergoing a parks master plan update right now. So potential improvements were tied to that to make sure that we were, if those stay and if we create those connections, that we're doing them in the best way possible to make sure that the usable area of the park for any potential future renovations stays the maximum area it's able to.
Got it, okay. And then with regard to the driveways that are like interconnecting the community, are those public areas or are those part of the tract itself?
Within the project.
Within the project, after you do all the subdivision, are those going to be city streets or those?
No, so those would be private drives. There would be an easement over it for any public utilities as well as fire access.
Got it, okay, all right. And then as far as your utilities, and I don't see anything with regard to utility poles that are going to be installed. I don't know if you're aware, but there's a new citywide street sweeping, I don't know, signage that's going up kind of willy nilly all over the place. And I wanted to just make sure that you guys are working directly with our public works to ensure that utility poles are installed in proper distances. So we're not seeing the ad hoc sort of pole nonsense that we see today.
Sure, so we are not proposing any overhead utilities or anything like that. So the only utility poles in that sense that would be getting installed along public streets would be streetlights. I don't know offhand right now if any of the ones on Nora would need to be moved or not. Those are currently served overhead. If for some reason those lights did need to, the location of the lights needed to shift as it relates to a driveway location, we would be responsible for moving that light and rewiring it so it's underground. But aside from the public streetlights, I don't anticipate any utility poles or signages along our front.
So if those don't move, they're going to remain overhead connected?
So the ones on Nora, our understanding is that they had just recently been upgraded. And so they're in their existing condition, so those are newer. So in discussions with public works, the requirement was if we touch them and need to move them, then we'll have to move them to underground, but otherwise they could remain.
So we're going to have a new development that has non-undergrounded utilities?
So it is purely the power serving the electric pole, the streetlights. Again, this is what public works told us. So I'm just sharing what was told to us. If it was that big of a thing, we have no problem undergrowing it. It's just not ripping out work that was already done.
I understand. That would be sad, but we should move forward, not backwards.
Sure.
All right, that's all my questions for now.
I've got a question about housing assistance or first time home buyers. Are you going to do anything to help first time?
Yeah, so right now, we have agreed to 10%, so 10% of the homes proposed would be included in the city's home buyer assistance program. And we're looking at a $15,000 contribution per home.
And will any of the units be affordable housing?
We are not currently proposing any traditional affordable homes on the site. They would all be market rate. However, as I mentioned, our pricing is all below FHA home loan limits and we try to keep them priced for a first time home buyer.
Thank you.
Luisa.
Luisa, sorry about that. Thank you for that great presentation, by the way. How many entrances are there to the project? I'm sorry, because I didn't hear that earlier.
Two, yes, we have one on Nora and then one on Del Norte, which is essentially in line with the terminus of hollow. Yeah. Yeah, the darker block of textured paving.
And I'm sure technical studies were performed. Is that enough for 260 residents?
Yes, yeah, my traffic consultant is here if you have any specific questions on traffic and that analysis. But the results were adequate, yes. It was enough access for life safety, trash, circulation, all of that, yes.
I think I would like to, would you guys like to hear from the traffic? I would like to hear, but afterward, after we're asking any questions. I'm sure you've had other builds with similar numbers of units. Has there would have been obstacles or problems in the past that you would say hindered or were not conducive to building this type, or for the residents anyways?
Yeah, so then that was one of the things why I mentioned, guest parking tends to be one of the bigger ones, making sure that residents aren't overflowing into those spaces that they're used for guests. So usually when we have a community open, we don't have any necessarily parking programs in place. However, as phases start getting sold and if we're seeing that being impacted, while Meritage is still a part of the HOA board, we'll really change that quick to get ahead of it. Otherwise, that would be the main thing that through the construction process I've heard. Realistically, we keep a very clean job site. We try to ensure we're following to a T all of our mitigation measures to avoid, you know, dust, noise, any of those things that we know become a nuisance coming into an existing area, especially having neighboring homes. We really want to be a good neighbor.
And the design too for the neighboring homes. I think that was a great idea, putting the SFRs all around.
Yeah.
And then the cluster homes or whatever you want to call them in the interior. So what's the ratio from the single family residents to those fourplex and fiveplex?
Yes, and I did just want to note, so we have four, six and eightplex town home buildings. The five and the seven are a little deceptive because on this plan that you see the blue units, one garage accesses from the alleyway where all the other garages do and then the other from the looping driveway. So from the rear, it only looks like seven garages, but it's eight or it only looks like five garages, but it's six. So we have 34 single family homes. We would be proposing 226 town home units. I don't know that percentage offhand, I apologize.
And then there was a question regarding the affordable homes. Now you were saying there's a $15,000 grant towards first time homeowners?
Yeah, so that'll be for 10% of the units.
Okay, and that would be towards the homes as well or just the?
So my understanding, the way that the housing assistance program works is that it is essentially a grant or a discount on the purchase price for those first time home buyers. There's a handful of points that have to be accumulated where you're, whether you're an existing resident or you work in the city, but you have to be a first time home buyer. So we would go through the process of vetting that, clearing that person with the city as well. And then on the purchase price, they would get that discount.
So is that an incentive specifically for West Covina residents?
Is it specific for West Covina residents? It would be at the end of the transaction. There's specific point criteria that they have to qualify for. One of them, I believe, is either an existing resident or that they work in the city, I believe.
My understanding is that many will serve towards the first time home buyer program that's already in place.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. In regards to parking spaces, I know that's going to be a concern with a lot of residents around the area. The proposed was initially 2.23, I think, spaces and it revised to 2.3. I mean, if I'm buying a house and it has three bedrooms, four bedrooms, what not be? Eventually, everybody in that bedroom is going to be driving a car. Where are all those cars going to go?
Sure, so we target really that first time home buyer, first time move up buyer. So a lot of our buyers are working professionals or people who are maybe just starting families. So it's not the immediate concern. But a lot of times, as families grow, as they're getting to the age where maybe kids are driving, they tend to move on from our communities into a bigger home that can accommodate the additional cars.
Let's say, you know, two families don't move into one house. Now you've got four people.
Sure, so what we find with a lot of our homes and Meritage home buyers is the individual or individuals buying the home live in the home. They don't, we have a very small amount that end up getting rented out where you end up with multiple adults or multiple families living in it. It's always a concern coming into an infill area especially, but we find that that is a very small percentage of our homes that get lived in that way.
Any other questions?
I guess regarding the two driveway that we have over there, is it possible, since it's private, I believe it's private driveway, once it's done anyway, is it possible to be gated?
We are not proposing gates realistically for fire. They are not designed to provide an adequate turnaround. And we wouldn't want queuing out into the street or people needing to back out into the streets. So this would not, without a redesign and probably eliminating homes to create that turnaround area, you could not gate this vehiculally.
Okay, and then also another question was doing constructions because the two driveway actually is accessing through the current, I mean, the south side which has residence area. Is there a potential that you can actually work with the current, I believe, commercial property right next to it off on Sunset? Perhaps have a temporary driveway that, I mean, there was a temporary driveway over there, like there were two of them?
Yes, so there's the current driveways that are into the school parking lot that are on that Del Norte Street extension area. So we have not gotten to the point yet of looking at construction traffic plans or anything like that. But the goal would be, should this be approved with the addition of the left turn pocket on Sunset that would allow left turns kind of directly into that parking lot area, that would be how we would drive a lot of the construction traffic to avoid the single family neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Can we hear from your person with the traffic studies?
Hi, good evening. My name is Charlene Sol. I'm with Urban Crossroads and we prepared the traffic study for the project. Are there any specific questions that you have related to transportation?
We would, you know, whatever studies were performed to give more information to the residents regarding their concerns with traffic, that would be great.
So there's two kind of elements of transportation. There's the SEQA component, which it looks at vehicle miles traveled. So vehicle miles traveled was prepared for this site and it found that for transportation, it was less insignificant. And so there were no additional mitigation measures required for VMT. And then the city also requires that intersections be evaluated and looked at. That's like the traditional, what people are looking for in terms of like congestion, how much delay is being experienced by people at intersections. And so we did go through a scoping process with the city staff and their peer review consultants in terms of scoping out what that study would need to evaluate, how it would need to evaluate everything. We did look at intersections, including the site access points and various intersections in the surrounding area as it met the city's criteria in terms of how many trips this project was contributing to the surrounding area. And we did an analysis. There are no existing deficiencies. When you add the project to that, there are no deficiencies. We do look at a cumulative condition in which you add growth to existing volumes and also add future traffic associated with other developments that may be going on at the same time as the project. So in that situation, our study identified two deficiencies, which were at the two offset intersections of Roland to the north on Sunset. Our study did identify signalization of those intersections as a potential improvement recommendation to resolve that deficiency. And those are the recommendations in the traffic study. And then as Luisa mentioned earlier, the original traffic study evaluated a right and right out for the proposed access from Del Norte's extension over to Sunset. And then as part of the consideration of allowing a left turn in, we did a supplemental analysis that looked at if the median were to be open and allow northbound left turns. So we did a separate analysis of that. And those operations also work acceptably in terms of meeting cities' level of service criteria. And then the left turn pocket, we did a queuing analysis and ran that and determined that the sizing for that left turn pocket would need to be at least a minimum of 100 feet.
So that being said, I think the concern here is the congestion, and with only two entrances, and that's why I was asking you, a project of this size, shouldn't it have more than two entrances?
No, two is actually the typical for this type of size of project, and is typically the minimum required by fire, two, or two points of entry.
So you receive up to a year, you said, from responses from residences who have purchased, you know, after construction has been completed. So has any of them, I'm hoping you would tell me, but have any of them responded with the concern with congestion?
No, we've never gotten that as a, as a complaint. In fact, what I would say is, in our, what the data shows is, in our one-month survey versus our year-end survey, the satisfaction actually goes up after they've been living there a year. So the congestion concerns, people who are buying into a townhome community understand the density, and said that it's not, it's not something that comes out of the blue to them. They understand that they're going to be living in a slightly denser community, but that it's someplace that they're able to call their home, so.
Any other questions?
Just, just something else to note, too. There were comments made by the public in terms of, as kind of relates to congestion, but just trying to keep outside people away from using streets that are internal to their neighborhoods and stuff. So things that we did look at in the traffic study, that the city asked us to look at, were potential traffic calming measures. So the traffic study does list several potential options that could be implemented, not, not, not within the project itself, but on surrounding existing streets, to kind of discourage outside people from using those roadways and coming into the neighborhood.
So like a center divider, or?
So like, the, the normal thing that people are usually, that's-
Please have quiet in the audience, please.
That's pretty common, or like, speed humps. When you see those in a neighborhood, the intent of that is to basically slow people down and make it undesirable for people to use that as a cut-through route, basically. But there's other design features that could be used to, you know, encourage traffic calming in a neighborhood, such as like raised sidewalks, or, you know, physical design things that could be implemented for a project that's being newly constructed, versus trying to retrofit something into a neighborhood that already exists. So you have a little bit more options when you are trying to construct something new versus retrofitting into an existing neighborhood. There's also like the on-street parking. Those kinds of things visually help to do traffic calming in a neighborhood, because when you have on-street parking, you're visually reducing the traveled way, and so by nature, people just end up driving slower. So things like that kind of help keep outside people from entering into neighborhoods that, for people who don't live there.
I understand that the residents that purchased in an area like this are going to understand that that's what they got to live with. It's the residents outside that area that've been here longer than these residents, or that ones are going to get impacted. If you're saying there's 260 homes, and if you just multiply that by two, that's 520 cars that are going to be going through and out those two exits, impacting all these other residents that live out there. That's my concern, is, that's just two cars.
So the trip generation for the project ends up working out to be about 130 a.m. trips, so that's, you know, 130 total inbound, outbound in the morning, peak one hour between the commute periods of 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. So that's what we look at and evaluate in the morning. In the evening, it's about 150.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we will hear from the residents. Are there any in favor? I have a few cards that don't have if they're opposed, or if they're for. Do you have more? So I guess they're all against. Okay. So none in favor, we'll start with the opposed. Gail Place? Can you come up to the podium, please? Thank you.
My name's Gail. I've lived on North Nora, right where the park is.
Sorry, could you speak to the speakers? Everyone can hear you.
Can you address the commission?
I'm sorry, what?
If you're just the commission, you speak to the commission.
I'll address you guys. Okay, so I live on North Nora, right where the park is, Nora and Roland, lived there since 81. My biggest-
Give me one moment, and stop the time. For respect out of people who are speaking, can you please silence your phones, and just give consideration to have your conversations once you leave? Let's give her the respect that she needs. Thank you, please proceed, Gail.
My biggest concern is the parking. I'm about five houses down to where the structure will begin, okay, where the structure goes to the south. Okay, so if you put permit parking all along this, and your driveway is right where I see it, they're going to walk about five houses, and they'll be parking in front of my house. Okay, I have multiple families in my house. I have five vehicles. They park in my driveway, three, and two in front of my house, okay? I shouldn't have those people parking. 77 inside parking is one and not enough, okay? And then if you put 77 on the outside, who has two cars? Nobody has two cars. They're going to have aunts and grandmas and everybody living with them. There's going to be at least three cars, okay? So if you take 260 cars, and you subtract 144 for the parking, you're still talking about 109 vehicles parking on the street outside of where they have permitted, okay? That's way too many vehicles on the street. You want to build the house, build them. Get the cars inside the structure, okay? That's my biggest thing. Second is more addressed to you guys. We need to stop considering so many homes in West Covina, and more about rec. centers, and things for these kids. Parks to be developed, to have more activities for these children who are running the street. I'd like to see all of you come over to Del Norte Park at 10 o'clock, and see all the drug going on, the smoking of pot, the young kids playing their music. You need to clean that stuff up and give these people something to do, instead of worrying about more homes and more taxes. I understand it's needed, but what are you going to do about the youth? My kid, grandkids go to Montevista. Their class is 34 children per class. Where are you going to put all these kids to go to school? That's where I'm concerned. I'm concerned about the parking, and the youth that are running our streets, and the schools that are overwhelmed already.
Sorry, I can't even read the writing. Forgive me. You, you're on Workman, Lucy, what's that?
Araceli, something.
Araceli.
My name is Araceli. My husband and I, my family, we live in 1640 West Workman. We didn't make the cutoff, just by two houses. So we didn't know anything until our neighbors informed us that this was happening. And I think you guys need to do better. You need to inform your community. We have so much technology nowadays, you know, there's-
Through the chair, I think, I think maybe we should remind the public not to do that, but also, I know a lot of the comments, so let me respond to that, just as, we, we didn't do that.
No, I, you know, sorry, you know-
Just for clarity.
Just for clarity. I mean, wait until I'm done, so that you couldn't interrupt me, because you know what-
That wasn't interruption, so we're trying to run a business meeting. But, but also, I think it's important, through the chair, that the public knows how the whole thing works, so that-
All their time. Give her back her time.
Aren't doing that.
If I, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, and, and this is just because of what you're saying to me. This is a very impactful, without my time, this is a very impactful decision that you guys are going to do, not just for our generations, my generation. We've been here 20 years, started with two vehicles, okay? Four children, six vehicles. New parking signs that basically, you can't park on Tuesday on either side of the street, and you have to walk two miles to park your car. A lot of upsetting decisions, and a lot of lack of transparency, because everything is making sense as a resident right now, that basically, the pipelines that were being done through our neighborhood, all goes to that construction. Parking signs, all to that construction. We're catering this. And like somebody mentioned, sir, Jose Reyes, our community, the people that already lives here, we are going to, we are going to see the impact years down. Don't make the mistake that many people do, and say, we're making a decision right now for revenue. I think I calculated almost $200 million revenue out of this, if they sell at $750,000. They cut 15,000, 15 million by the, the ones that they cut off. But considering that there's only two entrance points and exits, I work for a school district, I could tell you, this is going to be an issue for schools. Population 32 per class, teachers are not able to teach. They should have opened another school. That's what they should have done. We are suffering, California is suffering right now for students, okay? That's what we needed. We needed to cater to our education, that California is doing very poorly, but if you cannot close the gate, that should be an indication of safety issues. Earthquakes, fires, are all those cul-de-sacs. We need to reanalyze this. Not only rely on what they're providing, let's do our own investigation. Let's use your, hire someone to really look into this. Don't let us be the only impact. Hey, the noise, Workman is used as an alternative street for the freeway, okay? My windows are this thin. They won't suffer any noise levels, I will, okay? My bedroom window is to the street. If a dog barks, I hear it. If my neighbor's having a conversation, I hear it. If somebody's walking, I hear every conversation. So this is not going to be a benefit for me, okay? So please, 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 let's take our time, let's get the input of the community. We're going to pay the price. I know we're in need of money, we're all in need of money. The entire country is in need of money, but this is not the solution. Please take your time and ask the community what we want. Thank you.
I've been living in West Covina for almost 30 years. I'm directly impacted by this neighborhood, directly affected by this proposed rezoning for the 282 units. I support responsible growth, we need it. This is a proposal, but far beyond what our neighborhood and public safety system can handle, okay? It's not responsible. First, moving from low density to the 282, or even 260 units is an extreme jump. The scale and height would permanently change the character of our neighborhood, and bring a population that our streets and infrastructure simply were not built to support. Young Luisa stated that there's going to be engagement in this pool area. That's engagement for that community, and she's going to disengage the rest of the neighborhood that has been here for 50-plus years. So you're bringing in a community in a neighborhood and destroying another one. I propose that you bring it down to 100 homes, because it's needed, but have them have their own park, their own dog park, tennis court, pickle bar, whatever, and create and have them use that. Right now, even the dog park, there are, on any given Saturday, 15, 25 dogs, and there's already a lot of dog feces and things, and that's just on a low day. Imagine the 260 homes, even a quarter of those homes, about 70 houses will have pets, and they're not going to have a problem with dog feces, litter, and this and that, because the city's going to do that, have to clean up. So we're going to pay more, because you're going to need more people working there. Police response already is slow. This 260 homes now, it's not, they, we're not ready for this. We can't have it. That's huge, public safety. You know, the, if you're going from low density to high density for just this community, why aren't we looking at the park going from low density to the high? It's being brought, it's being used more. Why is that second half, when Mr. Brian, or the gentleman, the council, the council person that came two years ago to our home, knocking on the door for a vote, he goes, you know, the proposing is sell this property, the school is, he goes, they want, they want to take the second half, I'm proposing a fight against the second half. We need to keep those baseball fields there, this being used as part of the community, it's part of the heart, because I'll fight for that. It's just been given up. Traffic and emergency access will be worse than a project this size, could add over 1,000 daily vehicle trips to narrow. They said, oh, 200 and something. You go there, that little street that they're talking, proposing a left-turn lane in there, I turn on Roland off of, off of Sunset, it's already a traffic jam there. The exit, because we have Portos, because we have apartment buildings in the mall, that exit coming off of the 10 freeway, when you exit Sunset, it's a zigzag, right where the Hustler place is. Please, 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 go on a Saturday, see it, walk yourself, and see what it would be like for this to be changed, I beg you, because it's, it's not, any record, any data, any analysis can show a picture that is perfectly fine. Now, we're in a school district, we say, oh yeah, all our tests are going up, and it can be curved, I'm sorry to say. Until you stand there, please go out. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Laura Vieira, I'm a homeowner at 343 North Shady Dell. I was included on the map, but I never received any communication from a potential builder. I wanted to let you know, I purchased my home, I've been a resident of West Covina for over 35 years, and I purchased my home because of the charm and the stability of the neighborhood. I purchased my home because of Del Norte Park, and West Covina has always really had that long-lived motto of live, work, and play in West Covina. And to Mr. Lewis's point, Commissioner Lewis's point, taking away that baseball field is a very, very poor idea for our children. This proposal does not honor the values that I moved here for, and I respectfully oppose it. Meritage Homes, they, the project was to place more than 260 units on just 13.62 acres, and this, it's incompatible with our surrounding community. I, I drove the, the city this last weekend to see if there were any four-story residential project, or residential buildings anywhere, and they didn't exist nearby, I'm glad that part got scrapped. Even with the proposed changes, though, the three-story medium-density sections at just over 19 units per acre is a dramatic contrast to the single-story, the single-family residences that that entire community creates, that my neighborhood creates. We're comprised of mid-century ranch-style homes in our neighborhood, and the architectural style, it doesn't even really complement the homes that live nearby, in my opinion, at least. For decades, our, our community has preserved a mid-century aesthetic. We would like to, if, if we, it would permanently disrupt the look and the feel, and all of the hard work we've done to maintain our properties. The most significant loss, of course, would be the baseball fields. These fields are not just open space, they are irreplaceable community assets. My children played years, years ago, they're 28 and 33 now. This is where my children learn teamwork, responsibility, sportsmanship, families gather there, lifelong friendships are formed, kids stay active and engaged, and removing the fields without providing any equivalent green space, or any, anywhere for West Covina National to survive, is a direct blow to the well-being of our youth and the future of our internal recreation programs. Parking is a huge, serious concern. Over 260 units and insufficient onsite parking, overflow is sure to spill onto the major streets. The park, the surrounding residential areas, enforcement is going to be, sorry, thank you, everybody.
Good evening, everybody. Glenn Kennedy, 63-year resident, born and raised on the north side. I went to Del Norte, I coached there at the Little League, I played there, I coached there, I umpired there, I held every board position there. I spent a lifetime over there. You're going to destroy that right overnight. They have not proposed anything to make the field. Okay, we'll move it to Montevista, really? There's no snack bar. How do you expect the Little League to make any money without a snack bar, number one? Number two, I sat on this planning commission for a few years, I would never approve this project because of the parking. No, nothing against Meritage Homes, they build a nice product, and they're a reputable contractor. Parking, 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 parking. Really, you're going to tell me that I'm going to park two cars in a garage? Please, does anybody here park two cars in your garage? Hell, no. No, unless you have a 68 Roadrunner or something, or a classic car, you're going to park it. Nobody parks in the garage, okay? So you're going to tell me this. So usually, when you're going to build 280-something units, 262, it's got to go one-to-one, okay? One parking spot for every residential house. Now, if you wanted to cut it in half, I think that'd be acceptable, 150 parking spaces. But they don't. It's four-to-one. They want to go 78 to 260, that ain't going to fly, okay? So I'm putting parking on the street, they're going to count those as parking. You don't own the street, we own the street, we're the taxpayers. So that ain't your property, that's our property, and it's first come, first served. And by the way, the city probably one day is going to go to an overnight parking, no what's going to happen there, okay? And with that, you're going to take away all the parking from the park, and that's not fair to us residents. And I didn't think the school board really thought this one out, because as they said, oh, well, they're all going to be new families. Okay, 260 homes with a kid or two kids, that's 500 new kids, where the hell are they going to go to school at? Montevista can't, can't take those kind of students. So I thought the school board should have sold the, or leased the property to the city and just expand the park. You know, that's my two cents, and thank you very much.
Dan M.
I've been a resident in this neighborhood my entire life. As kids, my brothers and I, we went to the schools locally. We played in the parts of the playgrounds, the basketball courts, around the T-ball and baseball teams. And I use the park several times a week currently. While the fields aren't as available as they are a decade ago, they've always been a part of our park and are still used by the community today. So I'd like to share three concerns that I have with the rezoning of the former Del Norte school. Broadly, these are permitting the high-density housing in a single-family neighborhood, the impact of the significant increase in the population, and with respect to this project, the proximity to the park and its impact. This neighborhood is mainly single-family, single-story residents. The zoning plan is considered tonight will permit the developer to build medium and high-density housing with four stories for a total of 282 residents. I know that's changed now, but for comparison, the number of houses, that's nearly the number of houses enclosed by Workman, Sunset, Orange, and Puente. So I made a little sign here, just to compare the number of houses that they're looking to put in versus our whole neighborhood. So it's a fairly large percentage. We aren't near the metro system, in a commercial area, or other large developments where medium houses are normally put, and where it'd make more sense. This property should remain zoned, single-family residential, and the development should consist of standalone blocks instead of a large monolithic complex. Second, this development will almost double the number of residents in the neighborhood. This will increase the traffic and life pollution, and most importantly to me, it'll stress the already very busy park. The park will need to support twice as many people seeking recreation while simultaneously being reduced to roughly eight acres. The new development plan has, only has a small pool area for recreation, so it's clear that the developer expects the park to take on this load. Even the development at Workman and Vincent, which is half the size of Del Norte, has a large playfield and a playground area significantly larger than what's planned here. The city is essentially gifting the park to the developer by not requiring them to provide adequate usable green space. And finally, the development doesn't fit well with the rest of the neighborhood. It abuts the park and encloses, like a condo complex. If the city and the developer wanted to fit into the neighborhood better, it should be developed into blocks like what our city councilman talked about, maybe something like this, where you have a street that separates the park from the neighborhood and use blocks. Also, the street bordering the south side of the park, that would both provide more buffering between the development and the park, and allow more parking south of the park. It'd also provide more access to the residents currently that live in that area. The rezoning makes sense, and...
Thank you. We have many more.
You have rejected, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. Rebecca Yuric.
I hope I said that correctly. Yeah. I've lived in West Covina on Lang Avenue for 50-plus years.
Would you like to pull it closer now? There you go. I'll wait for you to, if I could hear you.
I've lived in West Covina, I've lived on Lang Avenue for 50-plus years. I oppose this plan as it stands. Single-family residents, one story, would be great. My biggest problem is the ballparks. I'm not okay with losing those. Nobody on this commission should be okay with losing those. If there was a plan to incorporate the baseball fields on there with single-family residents, maybe that would work. On top of the baseball fields, the other problem is Montevista. There is no way they can handle all those kids. We've got teachers teaching in temporary, temporary classrooms for years with no air conditioning, no heating, water that doesn't work, faucets don't work, all that needs to be fixed before you think you're going to put 500-plus more kids there. So between the baseball parks, the aesthetics of three-story condos, and the school, none of this is okay, and nobody should be okay with this plan as it stands. I'm asking you to please deny this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just to, it's part of continuing what we started at the beginning of the meeting, I, based on what I'm hearing, I think it would be smart to take all this input and continue this and not make a decision today, so would, would you like to consider that?
I think it's actually important that they came out tonight to have their voices heard, and then this will maybe help the applicant to go back.
Oh, yeah, I agree. I'm definitely not saying let's not hear them, but what I'm saying is, keep knowing that that may be the direction we go. We could also potentially do this in a more efficient way, and since we would have time if we continue it, we could give everyone here whatever their preferred easiest method of feedback could be as well. That's, that's why I'm bringing that up. But definitely not to say we don't want to hear it, because so far, what we've heard, I think, is good points. I think they should have more parking.
If, I guess what Commissioner Castellanos is saying, if your comments are duplicates of what we've already heard, maybe we can, you know, line up, say ditto, then we can move on. But, and also, Commissioner Castellanos had to put a beanie on. Did somebody turn the air up? Because can we lower, it is getting really cold in here.
That's why I'm sorry.
Am I right? Is everybody getting a little cold?
It's way too cold.
Okay, so next, Frank Chalpe. I'm so sorry, but, how do you pronounce your last name?
Chalpe.
Chalpe.
Yeah, I live at 425 North Nora Avenue, right across the street from the park, right where the restricted parking ends. So I'll do a couple of things, everybody already expressed what I was going to say, but I believe that they're going to park, overflow parking from this complex is going to go right down Nora. It's also going to go down Roland because they're going to have some entrances through the park, and it's going to go down Sunset, too. There's not going to be much parking. Another thing that wasn't mentioned is that Montevista School is just right up the street. People dropping off their kids, it's going to congest Nora Avenue, and that could be unsafe for the kids, too, that are walking. So that's basically what, everybody else said what I was going to say, so thank you for all the questions that you guys gave us as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mario Sobalvaro? Orvara? I'm sorry. Let's look at A or a zero, or no, I should know, right? How do you pronounce your last name, Mario?
Sobalvaro.
Right? Sobalvaro.
You can say Alvaro and then just Sob in front of it, you're good. All right. I'm going to head out. Okay, we, okay. Okay, I'm going to go again, start.
You know, you only have three minutes, right?
Yeah, I got you, yeah. I'm going to run through this pretty quick.
I've got a book here.
So I come, I do not live in the area, I utilize a dog park since 2018. We've been trying to figure out what's happening with the dog park, and it's led to this in hours and hours of research, what's happening here, because ultimately it led to, we're waiting to see what the developer does to see what happens with the dog park. Ideally, I would have loved to have seen the developer initially come out, pre-design, and say, hey, we're looking at doing something here, maybe the green space, you know, utilize that as an expansion of the park. That didn't happen, this is what we're working with. And researching this led me to a lot of things, so number one was the mismatch for the 260 units, we already talked on that, so that's been done. The community engagement agrees that it would have been better, you know, to kind of come in earlier for that, so I'm going to take this quick. On page 38 now, the VMT, vehicle mile traveled, I do not believe is a good metric for this area, specifically because of the park adjacency. A level, a level of service, a different study needs to be done for the traffic. VMT is like a, just a metric that was set up, I think by San Gabriel Valley Cog, set up a VMT tool, and it's not the right analysis for this park. You can go a little bit deeper in the information that is here. In addition to that, there are issues with the topsoil, I was going to show here, damn, 1:30 already. This is what this land looked like in 1948. It was walnut groves and orange groms. 1940s and 50s, they used pesticides, DDT, arsenic, sulfur powder, and stuff like that. Granted, that's all on topsoil, it can be mitigated, but you guys are doing an MND on that, and that just doesn't work. You need to do a little impact review on that. Most important part is we're leaving money on the table. SB 330, I believe the developer came in and got a fee freeze based on development impact fees that are locked in from 2015. That means for residential units, they're paying, I think, $2,000, where Covina and Almani are paying like $8,000 per unit. So instead of getting potentially $800,000 in development impact fees, we're only getting $280,000. And then, yeah, I'm going to run out of time with this. As far as the Meritage Homes, they make a great product. You know, I looked at the houses, everything is solid. I'm glad that they came to the table and got rid of the four-story. If they are willing to work additionally, I guess, maybe we can come to some arrangement. Again, a lot of people with other concerns here, but these are the technical ones that I found. And lastly, they did state that HOA is going to mandate that the cars are parked in the garages, but there's no structure stating how they're going to do that. So that has been good to know.
Thank you, Mario. Angela Gallegos. And Commissioner, I will just announce for the public that because this document was passed out to the commission by the prior speaker, I will put it up front for anybody in the public to read. It's copy.
Hello, how are you? I live on 550 North Conlon Avenue, and I've been here about 12 years. I'm a homeowner. And my husband's a fireman, fireman. And these two exits, he, as you know, he works in LA, so when you work in LA, you're in tight spaces. We don't want to become in LA. That's why we live here, because it's a beautiful community, and we're going to ruin it because there's too many homes. I do like the way they do the outside of it, but, but if you, if you're honest, and in the morning, on Conlon, when you're going to school in the morning, work, let's just address the children. They're already parking on our streets, just to park, because there's no parking, not even for the teachers. The after-school program, they don't have anybody at 12 o'clock, they have nowhere to park, so they park in front of our homes because there's nowhere to park already. So now, you're going to have these little kids that are already walking on, we don't have sidewalks on Conlon, on this side. So we're going to have all these little kids, all these people walk on people's lawns, people's streets to get there, they're going to have parked all the way down Conlon, and what do you think the, all these kids are, they're not going to walk, their kids are going to drive because it's not really safe to be, more traffic, more everything. In these day and age, people don't really walk. And now, when they walk, they're going to park all down the street, and they're going to be like stuck. There's nowhere, if you look at how they put the cones to go to school, they, they put the cones in the middle, and it's dangerous to come out and in. Like, I have to wait sometimes because people park in my driveway, just to can, I can pull out. So it's like, now that you put all these other homes, you're going to have that big of an issue. I don't really make it an issue with the kids because I'm like, it's only for like an hour in the morning, but now, when you go to traffic, now you have the kids, now you have the, to get on the freeway, as it is right now, for me to get on the freeway, I leave my home, I make a, I make a left, and I either go to Workman or Thelborne, and then I make a right, go down to Orange, and go the freeway that way, because that's the only entrance. As it is already, everybody's backed up. You think that all these apartments were, when, even if they leave and they go on that other street, which is Sunset, how are they going to get on the freeway? They still got to go through our neighborhood to get on the freeway. There's no way around it. And to get back on the freeway, you're going to have a congestion either coming off the freeway, which is going to kill people, or you're going to have a congestion when they make a left to get on the freeway, you're going to have congestion there, because people have to go all the way around. So it's, if we don't figure out, with these many homes, if you don't figure out how to get on these freeways safe, you're going to have accidents, and kids are going to get killed because all these little kids are in the middle of all this traffic. So that's my biggest concern. I do like how they have the houses on the outside, but these double things, it's too much, too much and not enough parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is going to be really short, because everything that everybody has said, I concord with. I live on Sunset Avenue, and I'm telling you, 5 o'clock in the afternoon, it's crazy with all that traffic, and you're going to be building these other homes, it's just going to just make it worse. And I've lived here since 1964. I have raised three kids. They went to Montevista, they went to Del Norte, they went to Edgewood High School, and the youngest one went to West Covina. So I love this city, I just don't want to see it destroyed, and that's the way I feel right now about it. Example, Workman and, over there in Workman and Vincent, it's a mess. If you've ever driven down that Workman Avenue, the parking is, I don't, I don't know how those people can live there with all that parking, and that's what I gotta have, and he's saying, okay?
Thank you. Next is Sheri Brillant, and then after Lorena Penal, so if you could actually please both come up, and then that way we can speed it up.
My name is Sheri Brillant. I've been to all three meetings that Meritage has had, and Luisa is very professional and easy to work with, and listen to all of my bitching, and two- And two of the complaints that were on her list are on the list, so they are taking note. I want to thank them for going from four stories to three. That is a bit of improvement. But parking seems to be the biggest problem. Meritage, I have a solution for you, but it is going to cost you money. If you took two of your living units and turned them into a three-story parking structure, is it going to cost you money? But it's going to cause you a lot less headaches in the long run. Thank you.
Lorena?
Good evening. I'm coming up here as a resident. I've been here for 30 years as a grandmother, and also raising my four daughters here. I just want to share a little bit about the safety of Del Norte Park. In 2018, West Covina National Little League had to leave Del Norte Park because conditions became unsafe for children. They stated that homeless people had taken over the area, with serious concerns including drug use, public drinking, indecent exposure, and human waste on and around the fields. The league later returned, but families still witnessed ongoing homelessness, drug use, and late-night activity after the park is closed. Just two days ago, during my morning walk, I witnessed homeless individuals sleeping alongside the baseball field, and felt concerned for my own safety and for the safety of others. Now we're being told that this quiet, low-density area is being pushed into a mid-high zoning to allow 260-plus homes right next to this park. We ask the city to please reduce this to no more than 100 homes, so safety and services are not overwhelmed. And our children is the most important thing. We've shared a lot about our children. It's the next generation, and we need to consider that. Because we'll be gone in a couple of, we'll be gone. But we want to know what we leave behind. This is not about opposing housing. This is about protecting people. How we protect our children shows who we truly are as a community. So please rise up in your positions and make the right choice. Consider every single one of these children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Paul Ayala? Paul Ayala and Sandra Garcia on standby. Thank you. Oscar Ortiz on standby.
Hello, my name is Sandra Garcia. We've lived in this neighborhood for 34 years. It was my dream neighborhood when I was a kid. I grew up in Baldwin Park, low-income area, but we took a lot of pride in our home. My husband and I did everything we could to move into the area that we currently live in. We love it. A lot of things have changed through the years, but I did everything everyone said, except for putting any major housing project there. It's like putting an Amazon distribution center, bam, right in the middle of our property. It's going to ruin the neighborhood. There's no way we can take that many people. We don't have thorough streets around there. Puente Avenue, Sunset Avenue, Orange. I mean, this city wasn't built like that. We weren't made to have these major projects here. In fact, the amount of houses they want to put in one small little area tops all the amount of houses in our whole neighborhood. There's no way to put that many people in that little area, and it's not going to affect us. Just the building alone, I can imagine how it's going to affect us. How are we going to get around? I mean, we're going to have to go all around the city just to go home. Everybody gets off the 10 freeway. If you're coming from eastbound, you get up on Sunset. You go around the, whoever they called it, whatever that nude place is. What is it? That place? You got to go around that. You got to go through, our streets weren't made for major projects like this. And to see something like, I mean, the first thing I thought of is, I want to move. This was my dream to live where I live. We built, it's taken all our lives to build our house, and we love it. And to see this happen to the neighborhood, it's just going to ruin. It's going to be so sad. I don't have kids anymore. My kids are fully grown. But for the people that do have kids, I can only imagine. It is, it's, I don't go out on the street when the schools are in traffic time. It's kind of a madhouse, but that's okay. But you can only imagine what 260 houses in a very small, tight community with streets not built for this type of project to be built. It doesn't fit. It doesn't look good. So, I don't know what you can put there. I mean, I could see a couple nice, one-story houses to fit through the neighborhood, but not a major project. I mean, I see how they're building apartment areas, townhomes, all these things on every little bit of property. I think it's ruining the area. I understand we have a shortage on properties, but people that want places to live, they need to move farther out. Because I suffered, I had to suffer to attain my home. And you can't just expect that, is that my time up?
Yes, thank you.
I didn't even know what that bell was, but thank you for letting me speak. Hopefully, you vote no on this project.
Well, thank goodness it's not a smoke alarm. I said, thank goodness it's not a smoke alarm. Thank you. Oscar Ortiz and Elvia Lima Ortiz on standby.
Hi. My dad told me he wanted me to come over here and speak for his behalf. He's been living there for 35 years. I went to high school in West Covina. My kids came, went to school here. You know, they're big and gone. But, you know, the traffic of the people parking, I live in Del Norte. You know, and you guys are going to put that street, you know, right there, right next to my house, on 333 North? You know, it's going to be a lot of traffic, a lot of people. You know, we always had a problem when we didn't have all these people. I can just imagine all these people coming in, you know, how much trouble it's going to be. You know, the parking. Look, you guys had, what was it, Workman and Vincent? You guys did a bunch of houses right there. You know, the neighbors, I know the people who live around there, you know, you know, they have people parking there, you know, in front of their houses. And, you know, all, you know, the side of the buildings, you know. And, you know, I can just imagine if you put so many cars there, you know, so many houses, it's going to be so many cars there. You know, I lived in a home like that in the past. And, you know, ask me what I had in my garage. I had kids, toys, a bunch of clothes, and no cars in the, we didn't have no cars in there. We had to park them in the street. You know, and that was just one single family. You know, and when relatives came, we had to park in the street. You know, and I feel bad for the people, you know, where I lived. And, you know, I use, where else I was going to put my car? You know, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Elvia Lima Ortiz and Steve Schuster on standby.
I am here just to say what everybody else has said already. Parking, congestion, density, all of that, that doesn't fit in a city like West Covina. That belongs in downtown Los Angeles. We deserve a better neighborhood than what this development is proposing. To start with, one of the things that I just heard was, most of the people that will come here, will come here for a couple of years and they'll move out out of the community. Then, what kind of community are we going to be? A transitory community? We want long-term residents that care about the city, that invest in the city, that want their kids to be part of the city, not some people that will just come in, exploit that area, and move on. We want small residential units, one family, two-family max. Even the single residential units that you see there don't meet or don't blend with the neighborhood. The city right now, the neighborhood is single homes with a front yard, with a backyard, with a swimming pool, and sometimes, not always. But what that is, is inviting of a family to come and share with one another. How are you going to get Christmas or watch sporting events in a development like that? What is going to happen with all the families that come and visit them? And the ones that we have around already? It's going to be way too packed. This area was not, is not adequate for 260 living units. And I ask the council to vote against it 100%.
Is Steve Schuster here, the standby?
Thank you for the opportunity. I want to agree with pretty much everything that's been said. Specifically on the traffic, if you've ever gone westbound on Roland to Sunset, to turn either left or right is very difficult certain times of the day. I avoid the intersection quite often, certain times. A light there might increase the safety, but would add to everybody's driving time. The other thing that I keep hearing, no significant impact from all these studies. How can 200-plus homes, 600 to 1,000 or more people, not have significant impact with only two driveways as well? I'm surprised the planning commission is even considering this, because when I tried to build a garage and submitted plans, they were so difficult that I just gave up. I live, I live right next door to the project on Sunset. And it's going to take away our views, our quality of life. It's just, it's a bad idea. It's too much in too small a space. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to request a two-minute break. That'd be okay? Thank you. Thank you. Can the meeting please come to order? Please take your seats. Thank you. We have one more. Angela Cunningham?
Father, who's suffering from dementia. And when he was still okay and learned about this project, he was very upset, for all the reasons that everybody else said regarding the parking. My main concerns, as well as my dad's, is they're adding these visitor parkings, or whatever those designated spots are on Nora for these residents. And then red zoning my dad's side of the street. Nobody's going to pay attention to the red zone. And when people park there, we don't have, I don't think there is going to be, that's going to be the low priority on the police officer's list of coming out to check where people are parking or not parking. Because it's happened on Workman, where my mom lives. And they added that UEI college, and they said, people won't park there. They parked there. And the police will not come out to, it's not high on the priority list. Pollution. When I did live in Covina, two doors down, there was a vacant lot, very much smaller than that. Once they started digging, and digging, and digging to build these four-unit story, whatever they are, rodents started coming out, just infestation. It started coming to surrounding neighbors in the garages. So if this is a bigger land, and they're going to do all that building, or all that digging, and the infestation of cockroaches or whatever comes out onto the surrounding neighborhood, that's going to be up to us to take care of our own health, safety, whatever we have to pay for to have the exterminators come out and take care of that. That was a concern. That was one thing I thought of when this big property is being built. And then lastly, I know the company's here to sell the project, get the project built, and then leave. And it's going to be left to you guys to deal with all the groundwork. Once it's all done, and we're going to be calling, complaining, sending things on whatever the Nextdoor app, or going on to the website. But I really think they should downsize to like That is restricted parking currently. Our homeowners are not able to park there. No one outside of that neighborhood, if they're not in those parking blocks, is technically allowed to park there. The 11 spaces that are created on the east side of Nora and the north side of Del Norte, those are up for grabs for anyone. It could be people from our community who park there. It could not. It's a public street. Anyone can park there. But on our site, we are providing 77 guest spaces. And right now, the West Covina Municipal Code parking requirement for guest parking for a project like this is less than that. It is .25 for guest, for multifamily. For single-family, it would be two in the garage, two in the driveway. So we are providing more parking than what is required by the city's code right now. So while I agree that everywhere in Southern California, you're seeing parking demand, at the end of the day, we are providing more than what the city is requiring. So I just wanted to reiterate that. There was a comment around understanding how garage parking would be enforced. So as we work through this project, if it were to be approved, the CCNRs would be reviewed by the city and agreed to by the city. And in the CCNRs, there would be language around the requirement of parking two vehicles in the garage. We do that in all of our communities that especially have the townhomes and it is effective. It works because at the end of the day, the guest parking is guest parking. You don't have room for the overflow. You are parking in your garage. And then there was a couple comments around Del Norte Park with regards to some of the safety concerns. And at the end of the day, this community would be bringing additional homeowners who want to call this area home, who take pride in that and are providing additional, you know, eyes on the park to help mitigate a lot of those potential negative behaviors. Because at the end of the day, what helps make change is when you have the community calling about issues and you get the additional enforcement happening to help prevent those negative behaviors. Yes. So that's, those are the high, the few items that I did kind of want to respond to and just kind of help provide that additional color. And if you have any other questions, I'm available.
Does the commission have any questions for the applicant?
You mentioned 100 would pencil out. What about somewhere in the middle between 100 and 260? Because I think, based on what we've heard, it is too dense. And I know we're at above, as you mentioned, above what the city requires for parking, although I do think it's a valid concern that parking has become, even with our current numbers, maybe we need to revisit that as a city. But parking has become a citywide, pretty, pretty big problem. So I think there is something to look at there. So, well, with that being said, you know, I think, well, for my fellow commissioners, I am in favor of continuing this. But with all that being said, I just want to reiterate the things I do want to see considered, more parking, more green space even. I mean, the loss of the baseball field, I think, although not your fault, not something the school district thought of carefully before engaging in this potential transaction. I think it is important. It is sad to see Little League lost, something to be considered. And maybe as part of a new design, maybe something could be incorporated to give a little bit back to the community, more than this shows in terms of green space and parking. And that'll yield the rest to my commissioners.
I'd like to also add that West Covina has requirements set by the state of California, like every city in California, that we are required to add a certain number of homes. This does not mean that, this comment does not mean that this is already approved. This is just stating that Meritage Homes is actually trying to provide a project that will beautify our city. And, you know, regarding the number of units, that's, you know, and the congestion, those are all valid points that the residents make. But also, as it stands right now, the current buildings probably make the neighborhoods less safe and attract transients. We do need to have something in that property, regardless if it's Meritage Homes or another project. But we will leave that at this time for, you know, I'd like to motion to continue. Should we just close or keep the hearing open, public hearing open until next?
You can keep the public hearing open. And we have a list of people who spoke publicly at this hearing. I would just make sure that it reflects on the record that for people who spoke at this meeting, when we present new information at the next, at the continued hearing, which is recommended to be January 27th, that they may speak again. But if you are speaking a second time, to be limited in your comments to the new information that'll be presented at that continued hearing.
Okay. Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I actually, before we continue, since we have a lot of residents here and since we've been in planning commission and regarding the housing issues that the state had, had basically require each cities to have, and I believe Jeff, if you can answer that, it's been, it's been several years now. West Covina by the state is required to have-
Rena numbers.
5,000.
Rena.
5,032.
Is what you're thinking of.
Correct. It's approximately 5,800 Rena.
As a city of West Covina, I think the states somewhat require us to have over 5,000 units and our city is pretty much built out. So to have those unit, it's mind-bothering to just try to figure out how, how many units that we have. Now, with that said, we're not saying that these projects will be approved or not approved, but we do need to have a lot of consideration. There's a lot of pressure from the states to have units being built, whether it's an ADU units or whether it's developers coming in. And, and not sure what the state would do. I guess hold fundings if we don't-
They do. Have until 2028, correct?
Until complete our additions.
Yeah, the Rena cycle runs through 2028, this current cycle, and the new cycle will start in '29.
I think it's just kind of important to point out to everyone here is, look, as much as you may feel that this, the illusion that this body has a choice on certain things, we don't. Okay? And, and the bottom line is, is because we as a collective, regardless of whether or not we voted affirmatively or not for those things, we as a collective have voted people into office to make decisions at the state level, which hamstring our ability to listen to what you want necessarily. As much as I may want to go right ahead and move in a certain direction, one way or the other on this particular item, there are very specific limitations. And one of the things that was mentioned, these, these regional housing needs assessment numbers, saying that this city needs 9,600, I believe, I believe it's 9,600 new units within the, within the next 10 years. It's insanity, particularly when you consider the fact that at the last census, this city lost about 3.2% of our population. So I don't know where all these people are coming in and needing new housing here, but apparently the state is decreeing that we need to do that in some way, shape or form. So ultimately, again, I just, I want to impress upon the public that, you know, as, as much as you may look at us as the arbiters of your fate, I promise you, we are not. The people who, everyone in this room has collectively chosen to represent them at the highest levels of government, have made decisions on your behalf that you have tacitly supported. And we get the government that we vote for. So these are the consequences of our decisions or not thinking through those things. And again, I certainly, I certainly share a great deal of concerns as with all of the residents who spoke today. But there are unfortunately circumstances in, in this room that dictate that as much as there are five people here who are, who are appointed by your five representatives in this city, we are not the only person in the room. The only person in the room is the omnipresent state legislature, who, good luck getting an audience with.
Well said. And, and also, that applies to your council people as well. It's not up to them. If the applicants meet all the criteria, I don't believe we even have a legal stance to deny them. So what we can do is instead of throwing stones at this nice young lady up here, maybe we can just ask that they take everything into consideration when she goes back to make it more, to take more consideration for the feelings and the concerns of the residents. You know, it is important. You have a lot of residents here tonight who love this city, long-term, myself included. And I shared that little, the concern with the freeway. That's a, you know, even with no traffic, trying to get through there is a bit of a, you know, but you have to, the people, the stop sign, I can only imagine if there's people coming off the freeway, those people, that step sign will never be able to go. They'll be waiting till, you know, rush hour is over. So, I mean, and those are, again, concerns, I mean, that should be addressed with the city. I'm not sure at Meritage Homes, but, I mean, I think, I thank you for the project, you know, to, you know, I think it's a nice, very nice project. But also, those are concerns for, for the city as well.
I want to say one last thing. I would like, if you, if you can take this back, maybe make a suggestion to redo another survey differently, maybe look into the people that have been impacted on, on the places that these residents have said they built these multifamily areas. In other words, like Vincent and Workman. See what the residents around there think, how they are impacted. Same thing with on Cameron and right across the street where the old Kmart used to be. Maybe ask them how they're impacted. Because I can tell you this, when I drive down that street now, I know that that street's pretty tight just to drive on that right lane because cars are now parking on that side of the street. So it's just a suggestion to take into consideration back to, to the developers and maybe, maybe come up with some kind of compromise that would work for everybody. Because I don't want to see that, that place remain a dump the way it is right now. But I do want to see something developed and bring the city into a new, new growth opportunities, but also, you know, work with the residents that have actually been here many years. You know, I'm a resident, been here a long time as well. I grew up in this area. So I take a lot of pride in, in our city and the cities that surround us because I grew up in this area. So that's all I can ask is just, just to consider looking into that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Just, excuse me. You've already had your, I'm so sorry, but you had your chance to address this.
And maybe we could let the public know that they could still email staff going forward to like anyone who has further concerns could email staff in the next couple of weeks-
Of course.
Or this week, whenever they want.
So at this point, we will motion to continue to January 27th.
I'll make the motion.
And just a quick housekeeping for Meritage. You can just nod. Is, are you amenable to a continuance to the 27th? Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'll second that. So we'll continue to the 20, January 27th?
I think Commissioner Cussonell is already second.
Oh, he's?
No. Well, either way, we're there. So now, all in favor? Are we all in favor?
Just a friendly suggestion, just want to make sure that we are keeping the public hearing open and we are specifying that people who have previously spoken should, should only address, should only address this body with regard to any proposed revisions that are covered by whatever Meritage's subsequent proposal is, including but not limited to the one that we got, I think, late yesterday. Is that, is that accepted?
Yes. And that's exactly what-
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
On the record?
Yeah.
Shall we do roll call?
Yes, roll call, please.
Sure. Chair Vaseta?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Casianos?
Aye.
Commissioner Reyes?
Aye.
And Commissioner Heng?
Well said. And also, that applies to your council people as well. It's not up to them. If the applicants meet all the criteria, I don't believe we even have a legal stance to deny them. So, what we can do is, instead of throwing stones at this nice young lady up here, maybe we can just ask that they take everything into consideration when she goes back to make it more, to take more consideration for the feelings and the concerns of the residents. You know, it is important. You have a lot of residents here tonight who love this city, long-term, myself included. And I shared that little concern with the freeway. That's, you know, even with no traffic, trying to get through there is a bit of a, you know, but you have to, the people, the stop sign, I can only imagine if there's people coming off the freeway, those people, that step sign will never be able to go. They'll be waiting till, you know, rush hour is over. So, I mean, and those are, again, concerns, I mean, that should be addressed with the city. I'm not sure at Meritage Homes, but I mean, I think, I thank you for the project, you know, to, you know, I think it's a nice, very nice project. But also, those are concerns for the city as well.
I want to say one last thing. I would like, if you can take this back, maybe make a suggestion to redo another survey differently, maybe look into the people that have been impacted on the places that these residents have said they built these multifamily areas. In other words, like Vincent and Workman. See what the residents around there think, how they are impacted. Same thing with on Cameron and right across the street where the old Kmart used to be. Maybe ask them how they're impacted, because I could tell you this, when I drive down that street, now, I know that that street's pretty tight just to drive on that right lane, because cars are now parking on that side of the street. So, it's just a suggestion to take into consideration back to the developers and maybe come up with some kind of compromise that would work for everybody, because I don't want to see that place remain a dump the way it is right now, but I do want to see something developed and bring the city into a new growth opportunities, but also, you know, work with the residents that have actually been here many years. You know, I'm a resident, been here a long time as well. I grew up in this area, so I take a lot of pride in our city and the cities that surround us, because I grew up in this area. So, that's all I can ask, is just to consider looking into that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Excuse me. You've already had your, I'm so sorry, but you had your chance to address this.
And maybe we could let the public know that they could still email staff going forward to, like, anyone who has further concerns could email staff in the next couple of weeks.
Of course.
Or this week, whenever they want.
So, at this point, we will motion to continue to January 27th.
I'll make the motion.
And just a quick housekeeping for Meritage. You can just nod. Are you amenable to continuance to the 27th? Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second that. So, we'll continue to the January 27th?
I think Commissioner Castellanos already seconded.
Oh, he's?
No, I didn't.
Oh, he did?
Well, either way, we're there, so now, all in favor? Are we all in favor?
Just a friendly suggestion. Just want to make sure that we are keeping the public hearing open, and we are specifying that people who have previously spoken should only address, should only address this body with regard to any proposed revisions that are covered by whatever Meritage's subsequent proposal is, including but not limited to the one that we got, I think, late yesterday. Is that accepted?
Yes, and that's exactly what
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
On the record?
Yeah.
Shall we do roll call?
Yes, roll call, please.
Sure. Chair Vasera?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Aye.
Commissioner Reyes?
Aye.
And Commissioner Heng?
Aye.
I did want to address one thing regarding noticing. The project was posted in the newspaper twice for this particular hearing, and mailers were sent out to homes within a 500-foot radius of the project. Then I just wanted to clarify also for the developer, the key point you're looking at is additional, specifically guest parking, correct?
Yes.
Maybe an increase in guest parking, additional green space, and maybe a design, something to soften the two-story or the project itself. And then in regards to the sidewalks at the park, we can certainly open communications up, because I was looking at the aerial. I noticed the sidewalks you talked about, they kind of terminate where the project is. Maybe they can create some new paths so that those sidewalks that terminate are, they connect to each other somehow. So, that could kind of take care of that. And then the utilities on-site will be underground. That's one of the conditions of approval. Specifically, the utilities on the site, there may be some poles along Sunset and another street, but the on-site utilities will be underground.
When we talk to Public Works about that, if that's something that is, if this is a new development, I think that's just back ass words. Sorry. We can't do that. We deserve better. So, if we can talk to Public Works about that and making sure that that's, that that would be part of something moving forward for all developments, that's crazy.
Are we allowed to say that? I second it, if we are.
And then I think they addressed the parking, the vehicles within the garages. The HOA will be in place, or CCNRs. One thing I've noticed, I've seen some projects come up with is the garage doors have a partial glass so people can see through. So, that kind of helps, you know, the community keep tabs on their neighbors. So, just some items I wanted to add to this.
Thank you. Interesting. But again, we're continuing this so that the public get a chance to see the revised plan that we all received recently.
Correct.
That will be on January 27th. Continue to January 27?
I'd like to thank all the residents that came out tonight. You know, it really shows where your heart is for the city, especially you lifers, you know. I've lived here since I was five years old, so I won't even tell you how old, unless you were here last time to know how old my mother is, but she's turned 101. So, anyways, thank you for coming out, and it's much appreciated. Thank you.
So, now we'll move on to non-hearing items. Physical Year 2025-2026 Capital Improvements Program findings and conformance with the general plan. Art, who will present the staff report?
The CIP project manager, Roberto Ortega, will present the staff report.
Should we give them a couple minutes? There's a lot of people. Let's give them a chance to leave.
adoption of the resolution for the CIP general plan conformance, the city council will then adopt the proposed CIP budget. However, this was taken to council back in July, which was already adopted. So, what we're trying to do is just ratify that situation. Why it wasn't brought, I didn't know. In my previous city, we never brought it to planning commission. It was, it came about through our finance director, where she said, hey, did you guys take it? And it was a no. So, we're here to propose, to pretty much present to you guys a CIP program and see if you guys have any questions on the projects. On this staff report, I did list the projects that we have for the 25-26. Here we have 35 new projects
Art, are we ready?
Are we ready on?
with 20 existing projects.
Can we?
Two?
And the recommendation, so staff recommends that the planning commission, acknowledging
Who will present the staff report?
Thank you. The CIP project manager, Roberto Ortega, is going to present the staff report. Yep. that the city council has already adopted the CIP, ratify the general plan consistency finding for the projects described therein. And I am open to any questions.
Art, is this an action item?
You just need to acknowledge that the council will, you need to acknowledge that there's a general plan consistency with these projects.
Okay, so you need a motion on this, then?
You should, yeah.
Since we have this on discussions, for example, I just want to ask facilities, the total project, did we really spend $3 million on that? Is that what it is? The funded projects? It's funded, but it doesn't mean it's spent.
Correct. It's funded, doesn't mean it's spent. Means we have it there if we do need to use those funds, if they're available.
Okay, for 2026, right?
Hmm.
So, we're looking at the general, it's 150,000. Parks is 2. something million. Sewer is 2.5 million, and street is 23 million. So, that's funded for 2025-26.
Correct. And on the proposed budget that I included, so it's attachment number one, it does have a graph indicating how we are, how it's getting funded and what funding sources.
Which of the graph, which graph is that?
The
Circle graph?
Circle graph, I mean, page 144, is that?
145.
145, okay. Thank you.
And moving forward, we plan in March of 2026 to start preparing the CIP to bring to planning commission before council adopts it. So, do things right next year.
Okay. And at the end of the year, do we get something that's completed project?
We do. We do have a list, and that's something that we can give to Art and give to you guys if that's what you guys want.
Okay, all right.
It'd be nice to have that as a report.
Yeah, that's something I could drop.
I mean, just an informational, you know, doesn't even need to be a presentation item, just a report. It'd be nice.
Absolutely. I can prepare that for you guys.
I'll motion to ratify.
I'll second.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that, does that also?
Need a roll call?
Oh, yes. Can we get a roll call, please?
Roll call.
Chair Vasera?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Aye.
Commissioner Reyes?
Aye.
And Commissioner Heng?
Aye.
It's okay, Lou, it's been a long night.
I know.
Okay, so information item, discussion of sign blight in the community?
Yeah, I had put together a PowerPoint presentation to kind of highlight some of the issues related to the street sweeping signage, basically scourge on our society as I view it. And I just wanted to show people everything. I've got a PowerPoint presentation up here that's ready to go. Like I said
I think you should be the sign police. Maybe you should give me the title.
You know, I feel like I'm channeling former council member Fred Sykes with the with, no, 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 not graffiti, with the, what is it? I believe he used the term, what is it? Oh, gosh, what was it? It starts with a P, but in any case, with regard to cellphone towers, proliferation of cellphone towers, that's what he used to say. In any case, I kind of wanted to start off with some of the stuff that I saw. Keep in mind, this is just an example. This is a problem throughout the entire city. But like I said, let's start with something that was done right. This is on the corner, basically, or near the corner, facing east on Vine Avenue, coming up at Citrus Street. This is the house on the corner. They have a sign that they actually posted on the utility pole. If we go to the next slide, you'll start seeing the big problems that we see in terms of inconsistency. So, this is along the Country Club on South Citrus Street. We have all these utility poles here, and they decide, hey, let's stick this ugly sign in between the utility poles as opposed to on the actual utility poles where we've done this throughout. Next slide. Here's the stuff that really irritates me. This resident here must feel like the city of West Covina hates them, because at 846 South Citrus Street, at the direct center of the parcel, they have this sign when they have two different utility poles right there. I mean, nothing more disgusting in terms of impacting curb appeal. I wonder what the heck the contractor who installed this was thinking. Let's go to the next one. The next person who I'm sure feels like they are the scourge of the city, or must be the scourge of the city. Let's go 816 South Citrus Street. Same deal. Next slide, please. Right here, this is the corner of Charlinda and Citrus Street, facing north. Notice the utility poles that are completely ignored, and we have this sign. I don't know why, but we do. Next slide, please. Same thing. Look it. They decided to put one right in front of the utility pole. Shocking, shocking. We spent $351 million on this contractor. Amazing, amazing use of funds. Next slide, please. Continue on down. Look at how many signs there are there, and how many utility poles there are. This is just Citrus Street. Next slide, please. Same deal, corner of Cortez and Citrus Street. Now, we'll go down further. My favorite thing of all, and if you're not sensing the level of sarcasm in my voice, you will love this one. Next slide, please. Here is a no-street-sweeping sign in a continuous fire lane zone. I don't know who that's for. Maybe the fire truck shouldn't park there during the street sweeping days. Next slide, please. Just decided to go down Walnut Creek Parkway. Same stuff. Next slide, please. This is over on the corner of Larkwood and Hollenbeck, who's facing south. Again, a little bit of sign overkill, but glad they actually placed it on the utility poles. Looks halfway decent. But do we need that many signs? I don't know. Particularly on that side of the street where I never see anybody parking there. Next slide, please. And then here's more no-street-sweeping signs and continuous fire lanes. This is Hollenbeck Street, right before Cameron Avenue, facing south. We'll go to the next slide, show going through the intersection, the other, the next continuous fire lane zone. See right there. Sorry, it's not that great, and keep in mind, it was, I couldn't exactly stop in a fire lane zone to take pictures, so. But take my word for it, that's another no-street-sweeping sign in a fire lane zone. Next slide, please. Again, this is the other side of Vine Avenue, 2541 East Vine, sign on utility pole. Looks good. This is something that we should be expecting if we're going to continue rolling out this policy. Next slide, please. But again, here's where we go off the rails again. See all these utility poles and just some random sign? And then, next slide, you'll see these egregious examples where that person has like multiple signs in their yard. It's crazy. It's crazy. And that's two consecutive parcels right there, and they have signs right in front of utility poles, right dead center of their properties. Crazy placement. Next slide, please. Again, you know, somebody who already has two utility poles in their yard, and they get another sign. Next slide, please. This is on Hollencrest. Like I said, this is pervasive, so I just want to give you a taste. Like, it's not me just cherry-picking things. This is the direct center of their property. They already have multiple signs on their property as it is. We can go up. Next slide, please. This is Casa Linda. This is a street that runs between Hollencrest and Hidden Valley Drive. It has exactly two houses on it, yet instead of using that streetlight pole right there, this person has that. Again, I don't want to belabor the point, but next slide, same thing here. 50 feet up, you'll see there's another utility pole there they could have used instead. Same thing. I just, and next slide, I think we're done after this one. This one is kind of crazy to me. Overgrowth, we can't even see the street sign, but they decided to put that sign right in the middle of the only grass that that address has. Again, crazy that we paid money for this. Next slide. Here's Casa Grande. You can kind of see where that Civic is right there. We could have put a sign on that pole and said, we put it right beyond that mailbox. Next slide, please. And then here's 2017 East Michelle. My favorite part is, this is the same parcel. They have one on either ends of this parcel. I, and considering that, I believe that the owner just purchased that residence, I have to say, I just feel so bad for them, because they deserve better. Next slide, please. I think this is the last one. Again, another center parcel placement. This is on Hillward. Again, pervasive throughout the city. I want the city council just to be well aware of what's going on with this. This is sad. I mean, really, really sad. And I can't think of anything worse in terms of the rollout of this.
Can we motion to put this, to agendize this, to make the contractor accountable for this? This is really bad.
I agree.
I mean, we don't want to accuse anyone of adding
Madam Chair, can I?
Poles for, to raise the cost or anything, but I'm sorry.
Can I, the reason that I was very, very pushy about making sure that this was on the agenda tonight is because our city council is considering their new signage policy with the new street sweeping days coming up at the next meeting. And so, it's very important that we make a recommendation to them tonight, saying, this is crazy. You got to actually have a cohesive policy on this issue, as opposed to just delegating it off to the ether, because that's what happened here. And that's not acceptable as far as I'm concerned. And I want to make it, I want to make it clear, we want, look, I'm not going to pretend I'm a fan of the street sweeping policy, but if we're going to do it, let's actually make it so it's not obtrusive to every single homeowner who paid good money to live in this city. It's kind of a, again, it's kind of a giant middle finger when we're putting these signs right in people, the center of people's properties.
We should ask the contractor to come back and rectify this. This is really bad. And who allowed them to make the decision? Shouldn't there have been someone delegated to tell them where these should be placed? I mean, they just decided wherever they wanted to put them.
I believe engineering department worked with them to identify the locations. My understanding is that project is complete.
I mean, we don't want to accuse anyone of adding poles for, to raise the cost or anything, but I'm sorry.
Can I, can I, the, the reason that I was very, very pushy about making sure that this was on the agenda tonight is because our city council is considering their new signage policy with the new street sweeping days coming up at the next meeting. And so it's very important that we make a recommendation to them tonight saying, this is crazy. You, you got to actually have a cohesive policy on this issue as opposed to just delegating it off to the ether, because that's what happened here. And that's not acceptable as far as I'm concerned. And, and I, I want to make it, I want to make it clear. We want, look, I'm, I'm not going to pretend I'm a fan of the street sweeping policy, but if we're going to do it, let's actually make it so it's not obtrusive to every single homeowner who paid good money to live in this city. It's, it's kind of a, again, I, it's kind of a giant middle finger when, when we're putting these signs right in people, the center of people's properties.
We should ask the, the contractor to come back and rectify this. This is really bad. And, and who allowed them to make the decision? Shouldn't there have been someone delegated to tell them where these should be placed? I mean, they just decided wherever they wanted to put them.
I believe engineering department worked with them to identify the, the locations. My understanding is that project is, is complete. So those signs are.
So who are the persons who told them to put them there? They specifically told them to put it right in front of somebody's?
I don't know they specifically told them to put them there, but I think they mapped out the general location of where they needed to be. We weren't part of that discussion, but my understanding is that project has, is complete. Any new signage that may come in regarding hours, I don't know that they're either going to replace the signs or they're going to do a decal over them.
I would say have them come and, and fix this or take them off a contractor's list for future. We don't need contractors like that.
Ma'am, I think what, what I believe we might consider is, since we all individually have a direct connection to the bosses of the city, we should each individually tell our council members because we can't force the contractor to come here, but they can. And really, as this project is complete, we could prepare them with this PowerPoint and our comments for what to look out for next and perhaps implement what you're, I think you're suggesting, which is, should we make them revisit what they have done as part of any future potential work?
I see negligence. I don't know about you.
But also regarding signs, I don't, I mean, I don't know whether it's being put up in one day or has it been put up throughout a decade? So at a certain time that these sign was put up, it may have been designated to.
These are recent due to the.
This is a recent project.
All of these signs.
This is a short, short time recent project.
Six months.
Oh.
Every single one. So what?
So there was no sweeping signs prior to this? Or this is just?
It didn't exist.
And, and we should get a refund for those poles that didn't need to be put in.
Can I, believe me, I am, I am furious about this, okay? So I, I took the time out of my day to drive around, do this, and, and make sure this was on the agenda. So understand, I'm, I'm with you, but I think what we ought to do concretely is to tell the city council that we are recommending that they have a coherent sign policy that does not place signage in the center of people's parcels, prioritizes placing things on utility poles that are already pre-existing, removes frankly decadent placement of these types of poles, and has, has consideration with regard to how they, how they do this moving forward, because overkill is going to be the biggest problem. And I know a lot of people who are very upset at the city council about this. And believe me, that's not a good thing. So I'm hoping that what we, what we can do is we can say, hey, we make these, these recommendations, we, we see that this is a problem, we see that this is a blight on our community, and we hope that when you do, do whatever you want to do with regard to street sweeping, whether we agree with it or not, that you actually implement something that takes these things into consideration. One of the things that I think is very problematic is that there, there is no cohesive policy on this. One of the things that was represented by the last two city managers, including the current acting city manager, is there's a 300-foot rule. There is no such rule in the vehicle code. It does not exist. The only thing that you have to do is put them at the beginning of neighborhoods and things like that. So make it unobtrusive. Cities like Baldwin Park, which frankly are not as desirable as our community, do those types of signs. Why can't we? If that's what we're going to do.
Also, I want to add, it's, it's, city council is no more responsible than we are, but whoever, what department? You said engineering?
I believe engineering.
Okay, so, but city, city council can rectify the problem if we, so, so what is the proper, do we, we are proposing this for, to agendize it for their meetings or how would we do that?
I think we, I think we'd make a recommendation to them, and we would say, transmit this ASAP so that it is something that is part of your report materials at the next council meeting, so that they can duly consider it. And realistically, everybody should be, you know, pulling out the battle cry for their respective council members on this issue.
Thank you, Commissioner Lewis, for that slideshow. That was very, very enlightening. Should we motion for this now? Can we motion?
Sure. I'll just before, just a couple of clarifications on, in terms of relaying this to the city council and how do you want to do so? I'm looking at your commissioner handbook, which talks about business transacted with the council should be made in the writing from the commission as a whole. I don't know that this is really business transacted with the council, but.
Right. It's more of a recommendation, I think.
But, but, yeah, we can certainly go through perhaps like the, the city manager's office to recommend that something be placed onto a council agenda, because the next sentence does say written communications to the, well, you can add to it as well. Written communications to the council should be submitted to the city manager's office at least five working days before the council meeting date. I would recommend sooner than that.
Agreed.
So, yeah, I guess the question is, is just what do you, do you want it to come back to you because?
If necessary. I think we have enough here to.
I don't think that, yeah, I, I would agree, and I, and I think it's a.
Out of our hands.
And I also think it's a time sensitive issue. That's, that's the reason why I would like to get this before.
So if I may make a recommendation, I think including this slideshow to all of the council members with maybe 10, 15 bullet points would be a good way to succinctly communicate this data.
I've had at least a few calls. I don't know about any of you.
Well, we, we could all do that individually, but then also I think having them also have it, you know, delivered to them anyway, we, we could do it both ways.
I mean, I've had signs regarding, I mean, calls regarding the signs on both sides, not, not even this. This is even worse. I'm going to go see if I have any signs in my yard now. I haven't noticed.
I, I do, I do want to make one quick succinct recommendation is, one of the, one of the things that I think the city council may inadvertently get tripped up on with regard to how they, how they deal with this policy, is the fact that when you have as many cul-de-sacs as we do in certain parts of the city, how are you going to rectify that with regard to one side of the street, parking or not? Or, for example, I, on, on the street I live on, there's a court, okay? There are exactly three houses on the court. Exactly, how do you, how do you divvy that up in a way that is economical? I think that those are things that ought to be transmitted to the city council so that, you know, people who actually make policy can make an actual learned decision on those things rather than kind of throw it out in the ether.
I'm not sure if city council actually even know the locations of these signs are being put.
That's what I said. I don't think that they're any more responsible for that than we are.
Maybe perhaps we need to get.
We can ask them and see if they could fix it.
Yes. But we also need to get involved with the department, which is, I believe, did you mention public works or engineering that?
Engineering.
Both, I believe, it's public works.
Okay, if that's the case, maybe the heads of each department should also get involved and get to know the situations is happening since there might be making the decision.
I'm sure TransTech is fully aware of where these were placed. I think we just need to ask the council to just have a discussion with TransTech about how this was rolled out and dig into the details, but I'm pretty confident, TransTech.
I mean, we should go put a pole in front of their house. I mean, and see if they, you know, think that that's acceptable. I honestly, I'm not talking about city council, I'm talking about people who haven't seen one yet. Even the engineers, even the, the company that actually did that, just, they didn't have any regard for the residents. Okay, so what, what was the proposal? How do we do this?
So, you want me to just make a motion? Does that help you guys?
Sure.
Okay. Happy to do it.
You want to motion for us to present to them this presentation as well as a request to create a comprehensive coherent sign policy that is unobtrusive in the, in its implementation?
I think we'll have to, I think we'll have to work through the city manager to get it onto an appropriate spot on the, the city council agenda, whether it be part of the, the, the street sweeping sign policy or whether it be part of a future agenda item.
And then just two subpoints on that. One, as to, as to number of signs, because you can implement this policy without having a sign every five seconds. It's, it's been done, trust me. Look around. Second, with regard to, not, the, the court issue, the court and cul-de-sac issue, because I know that they are, that they are considering a, you know, alternate sides of the streets and how that's going to be played out, because everybody can, can coherently understand what's going to happen with Cameron Avenue, because it's not a cul-de-sac, right? Well, I mean, technically it is, the dead ends, but you, you, you get my, my, my point on that is, on cul-de-sacs, if you're going to say you're going to have a policy of, you know, putting signs for one side of the, one side of the street, not the other, how is that going to work? I, I don't know. Those are, those are things that clearly were not considered, so. But that's, that's all I had for you.
Well, having a sign is a problem. Not having a sign was also a problem in the past. Everyone just park everywhere and the, the streets just don't get swept.
Well, the problem is now they have it on both sides of the street.
Yes.
So. We only need it at one, one time per day on one side of the street. People, the problem is they had nowhere to park.
Okay.
So this actually should fix the whole thing. Let's fix the whole thing, the signs and not only the position, but the side of the street, certain days. This should, should be, actually, a lot of people are very upset, which I think council is very aware of, so let's see if we can fix it.
All right. Do you need us? I think you need us.
Second, please. I'll second.
All right. Roll call?
Chair Becerra?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Aye.
Commissioner Reyes?
Aye.
And Commissioner Eng?
Aye. Okay. Commissioner reports, comments. Does anyone have anything to report on or offer comments on?
I hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving, and I hope you all have a great Christmas and.
Oh, yes, and a happy year.
All the time with family.
Absolutely. I, I second that or third that or.
Me too. I'll motion to approve that. Call all the holidays. Happy holidays. Okay, so Art, do you have any items to report?
No items, other than this will be the last meeting for the year. We don't have anything scheduled for the, the next meeting, and we'll probably won't see each other until.
January 27th.
January 27th, yes.
Okay, are there any city council actions to report?
No, that's nothing else.
Okay, so having no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 10:04 PM.